Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the March 29th meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Will you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
Present.
Supervisor Horstley?
Present.
Supervisor Tisha?
Here.
President Slocum?
Here. Thank you. Now is the time for a public comment for people wishing to address the board on matters not on the agenda today. And speaker cards are out in the lobby if you need one. And the first speaker is Martin Fox, followed by John Patino.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, my fellow veteran, Mr. Malpe, and county councilman, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. Please help family members of persons living with serious mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily and implement Laura's Law now without further delay. The Laura's Law implementation report about staff hiring, treatment provider selection, outreach, and stakeholder coordination, which the county manager says will occur in April, has been eagerly anticipated since the board directed Laura's Law to start on January 1st of this year. Please direct the resources being used for the failed misdemeanor mentally ill jail inmate early review for release program, the failed crisis collaboration program, the surreptitiously implemented court ordered evaluation program, and the long-delayed Serenity House to be applied to the prompt implementation of Laura's Law. Laura's Law provides persons living with serious mental illness with access to treatment before they experience a crisis and are booked into jail as a danger to themselves or others. A crisis collaboration program that is not based on evidence-based prevention programs like Laura's Law will fail, just like the misdemeanor mentally ill jail inmate early review for release program has failed 84.6 percent of the time to get people the treatment they need. Working on a request for proposal for an evaluation of Laura's Law only has value when the result is compared to the failed programs used to delay it. The window of opportunity that was wide open to making the implementation of Laura's Law evidence of policies and procedures that the citizens of San Mateo County can be proud of is closing. The credibility of the health systems' policies and procedures has already been damaged, and waiting to act until it is irrationally destroyed may make the county's responsibilities difficult, not impossible, to ensure in the future. Please help the family members of persons living with serious mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily and implement Laura's Law now without further delay. Thank you.
John Patino, is he here? Yep, John. Followed by Barbara Mathiason.
Thank you, Honorable Supervisors. My name is John Patino. On behalf of the hundreds of residents who could not be here, Resist Density Movement offers this statement to voice the concerns of our community in reference to PUD 124. We say no to the ill-conceived housing project being proposed by MidPen for Moss Beach and Montero, which is isolated, community-oriented services such as supermarkets, K-12 schools, banks, libraries, and medical practices, and no to adding a large housing development in a location with no walkability and adequate transit, and making even worse the traffic on Highway 1, decreasing coastal accessibility. No to altering our neighborhood roads, which diminishes the character of our communities, placing pressure and pollution on sensitive habitats of the residing wildlife. We say no to demolishing our historic parkland that we have enjoyed for decades. Medium and high-density dwelling units already exist in Half Moon Bay and Pacifica, where there are jobs and job growth. Half Moon Bay is clamoring for more affordable housing. Vice Mayor Debbie Rodek stated that they are considering multiple sites with a budget of $2 million. She urges Supervisor Horstley to contact them on this matter because the city would love to place more affordable housing in Half Moon Bay. What is it, then, that makes these 11 acres in Moss Beach so attractive? Our opinion is a zoning era that should have been corrected many years ago, when the county came to their collective senses that a four-lane highway over Montero Mountain through Half Moon Bay was not a good idea, nor was the vision of condominiums and multi-level parking garages stretched across the face of Montero Beach going to fly. If it were not for PUD 24 and its predecessor zoning, we believe Farallon Vista would not have been chosen. We ask you to work with Half Moon Bay and others to put this project where it will be of genuine benefit, not a burden, to those who will use it. So please say yes to helping us find a solution to protect our beautiful coastal environment so local residents and visitors can all enjoy it. And please say yes, Supervisor Horstley, for what residents in Moss Beach and Montero want and need. Turn back this misguided county policy. Please take another look. My name is John Patino. I'm a U.S. Army veteran. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Barbara, followed by Marcia Yates.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Mathiason, and I'm a resident of Moss Beach. I'd like to make a public statement on behalf of Resist Density, a grassroots organization from the midcoast of San Mateo County. We have recently organized for the dual purpose of proposing a housing development in Moss Beach and to pursue the conservation of this open space along with the special coastal character of the midcoast. Thankfully, this is still a beach community based on the actions of Post to conserve the Coral de Tierra property and the residents of San Mateo County who voted for the tunnel over the bypass back in the 1980s. There are two actions that point to the decades-old zoning of the property as now being completely outdated. The 1986 PUD zoning for this property in Moss Beach survives even as it is now clear that the population of Montero and Moss Beach cannot grow to provide adequate infrastructure or services for such a development. We are working as a grassroots organization to bring these concerns to light. MidPen Housing has entered into an option to purchase 11 acres at One Sierra to develop affordable housing. Even MidPen admits the lack of services is a problem. The Loma Prieta chapter of the Sierra Club has written a letter to MidPen questioning the location, stating that there could hardly be much worse location for affordable housing in the urbanized midcoast. They cite local inefficiencies, the dangerous interface to Highway 1, and the inequitable burden of distance to travel for residents already struggling with inadequate wages. To that, we add the concerns, the midcoast community regarding inadequate infrastructure, highway safety, and care for the sensitive habitats. We ask that the Board of Supervisors recognize how well-conceived this project is. No doubt, the need for affordable housing is extreme, but please do not overlook the issues. We are also here to ask the board to consider an alternative. This land, for a period of time during World War II, was part of Point Montero Light Station Complex and a naval training gunnery school in the '40s. It's been utilized as a community park for decades. Please help this land stay a park for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Marcia Yates, followed by Audrey Pachet.
Board of Supervisors, good morning. I am Marcia Yates, and I am a resident of the coast side of San Mateo County. I am dismayed at any members of the board and their staff who are trying to soft-sell any high-density project in this comparatively rural setting. I'm referring to the parcel of land between Moss Beach and Montero, which Mid Peninsula is considering to purchase and develop. Why is this possible? An antiquated 1986 PUD zoning law. Thank God for Post and their conservation of Coral de Torra, and for the San Mateo voters for overwhelmingly approving Devil's Slide Tunnel versus the bypass. Now is the time for the supervisors to support their constituents and say no to turning the midcoast region into San Mateo by the Sea, no to coast-side high-density development, no to increased congestion and traffic, no to increased pollution. The approval of Big Wave and the proposed widening of Highway 1 through Pacifica and connect the coast will begin to fast-track our Northern California coast-side gem into yet another high-density, inadequate infrastructure, and increased traffic nightmare. Have you recently reviewed your research and publication, Building Health into San Mateo County Cities, 2010? Some of the issues it addresses is, are there any services within walking distance? What is the proximity of public transit, food centers, community centers, and schools? Childcare availability, adequate infrastructure to safely support the community? Is this just another set of guidelines done on our dime to make us feel like you care? Much like the pending vacation rental ordinance, words on paper only, no teeth, and no belief. We have a better alternative for this land, Historic Point Montero Park. To honor our vets, to educate the public about our rich coast-side military history, hear me now, believe me later, your great-grandchildren will be proud you supported this alternative. Let's Make a Park, thanking you in advance.
Thank you. Audrey Pachet, followed by Mark Verlander.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Audrey Pachet, and I live in Moss Beach. And I'm here to, I'm here on behalf of my neighbors and for several hundreds of people that couldn't make it here today, to express the way I resist the housing development in Moss Beach. We are against developing this land into affordable housing, and I know that those who support this development project, they are pinning it on being able to help others who need housing. But the problem is Moss Beach is not the place to do this. Trying to place people in Moss Beach without adequate transportation, public transportation, without having access to grocery stores, access to physicians, easy access to schools, it would be a grave disservice to anyone that you would try to place in this housing development, and it is a massive disservice for the community and the residents who already live there. The residents of Moss Beach, including myself, do not want housing development. Please help support the residents of the community and consider rezoning this property. Help protect the beautiful coast side and help reduce the traffic congestion that already exists. Please act on behalf of the residents of Moss Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Verlander, followed by Kevin Malone.
My name is Mark Verlander. I'm a coast-side father and organizer of Let's Make a Park. After, since its announcement, the plan to, for MidPen to build housing has met with overwhelming community opposition. Today, however, our community is submitting a new plan for Point Montero, Make it a Park. After being allowed only a few days to gather signatures, over 500 people have signed our petition, asking San Mateo County Supervisor Don Horstley to work with us to acquire the 11-acre Point Montero lands at One Sierra and preserve them as a park. Point Montero is a very special location on the coast side. It has historical significance as a former naval base and Coast Guard outpost, has unique geographical location and its own microclimate. It's home to our beloved Montero Lighthouse and the internationally renowned Fitzgerald Marine Reserve, which was also preserved by community petitioning the county Board of Supervisors in the 1960s. Preserving Point Montero as a park has the potential to create a historic destination as important as Brasilio in SF or Point Lobos in Monterey. It's a perfect legacy project for the county to showcase its values by preserving the natural beauty of our coast side for community and visitors. As citizens of the community, we have come together to let MidPen, the MCC, and the county know that our remaining lands with historic and natural importance must be preserved before they are gone forever. Today, we ask the county of San Mateo to assist our plan to preserve Point Montero as a historic park and to give our community the same county budget allowances and financial incentives to Make a Park that they may be currently giving MidPen to develop it. This morning, we are submitting a 40-page Point Montero Park Vision Document that outlines a clear path to realizing Point Montero as a historic park by working together with private, county, and state resources. We look forward to working with Supervisor Horstley regarding the community's wishes for a park. As he states on his website, "The Third District of San Mateo County is a specially unique area. Our gorgeous coast from Pacifica to Santa Cruz County Line is a world-class scenic environment." Let's work together to keep it that way. Thank you.
Kevin Malone, followed by JQ Oswein. Did I get that right?
Oswein. Oswein.
Hi, my name is Kevin Malone, and I've lived in Moss Beach since 1986, and my house right up the street from the so-called development we want to do. And I just want to say that I do support making it a park. And Don Horstley, I would like to say that, have you ever tried to negotiate that area from a weekend, say, from 9:00 in the morning to Happen Bay? It took me 55 minutes this weekend to do that on a Sunday, okay? And the idea of any more residences up to 95, or whatever they wanted to do, is just, it just seems terrible to me as a resident. It's a lot of people in the neighborhood. We prefer it as a park, and I would appreciate you reconsidering this very much for the people of Moss Beach. Thank you.
Okay, JQ.
My name is JQ Oswein. I'm a resident of Moss Beach and a U.S. Army veteran. I'd like to make a public statement on behalf of the Resist Density Organization in opposition to the proposed development of the area known as PUD 124 in Farallon Heights in Moss Beach. In addition to the points already made by others today, with which I completely agree, I'd like to communicate the significance of the property in question as part of an important historic site which I strongly believe should be preserved. As you know, the entire Bay Area coast was occupied and aggressively fortified by the U.S. military during World War II. You're probably familiar with the history of some sites, such as Malaga Ridge, Pillar Point, and the artillery outpost in Devil's Slide. What is lesser known, however, is that there was a top-secret U.S. Navy anti-aircraft training center at Point Montero. This was a large complex with 48 permanent structures, housing over 1,500 men. It was located next to the Montero Lighthouse and included what is today the Montero Water Sanitary District and also the Farallon Heights area, and some of that in Moss Beach. In addition to the anti-aircraft gun mounts and ammunition bunkers, the complex included classrooms, barracks, and other structures. Pictures and an area map are shown in the package that I've provided to you. The Navy trained over 320,000 men at this facility, used anti-aircraft weapons from 1942 to 1945. Also, women Air Force Service pilots, known as WASPs, some of the very first female military pilots, flew planes from what is now Half Moon Bay Airport towing targets low over the ocean and allowed the men to shoot at them with live ammunition from anti-aircraft weapons. Our country is just beginning to recognize the bravery and sacrifice of these pioneering female pilots who served at Point Montero, risking their lives to train our sailors. Considering the hundreds of thousands of men trained at Point Montero Facility and the brave WASPs who supported them, the Point Montero Anti-Aircraft Training Center undoubtedly contributed significantly to the war effort and is an important part of our national and coast-side California history. Our group is advocating for this land to be preserved as a park to protect our local coastal environment. I also envision one or more kiosks in the park describing the Point Montero Anti-Aircraft Training Center and honoring those women and men who served over 70 years ago. I ask that the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors join us in helping to preserve this land as a coast-side and national treasure. Thank you.
Michael Prado?
That's a job I would not want to make.
Followed by Mary Beth Van Natta.
My name is Michael Prado. I live at 600 Buena Vista Street in Moss Beach. I'm just about 100 meters away from the proposed project. One of the things that we have is a private street at that location, so these are all not addressed as part of the infrastructure project. What I would like to do is first thank the supervisors for their historic support of the coast and everything that's gone on. You've made some very, very wise decisions over a long period of time, so my trust is with you. I do believe in growth. I don't believe that everything should be held back, but I believe in meaningful growth. By that, I mean meaningful growth for both jobs, meaningful jobs that have benefits. I believe in things that have a growth where you put a project in and property values are also increased. So the community benefits, everybody benefits by it, not just one small organization. We've seen other things where they've tried to do it. The building of the tunnel was a fantastic project, but it has just increased the traffic flow. So these are things that are just ways to go. I'm for improving the property values, and I'm also in favor of the park project. So thank you very much. And again, Supervisor Horstley, I thank you for your support of the coast. All right? Thank you.
Mary Beth Van Natta, followed by Jane, looks like Kilborn? There you go.
Good morning. My name is Mary Beth Van Natta. I also live in Moss Beach. I'm not a public speaker, so I'm a little shaky. At any rate, I just wanted to say that I also am opposed to MidPen's plans, and I am totally in support of a park, which I think would be a gift to all of our current residents as well as generations to come, and visitors as well. And hopefully, you supervisors will hear all of our arguments and understand that they are important to all of us in the here and now and in our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Hillhouse, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for our opportunity to speak. I'm not for great development either, but I'm also very aware that an awful lot of people have nowhere to live. If you read the Chronicle on Sunday, there are these 80-year-old lady whose children live in Montero. There are plenty of ways to create housing for these sorts of people in our community, and I think it's terrible, and particularly in our community, where people, what do they do when their houses are taken or they can't rent the same place any longer, like this lady? And her children live in Montero. And I don't see why we can't look outside the box and look at some of the things that are being done in other parts of this country. And right there in the Santa Rosa area, they're doing tiny houses, and they're doing a nice communal garden, and they're just developing a really nice community for people. We don't have to have big traffic if we don't have people rushing over the hill to work every day. But there are plenty of people who are 80 and 70 who still are active. You could have three cars, and they could share the cars. There are just so many ways of doing this project that have not been considered. And I think that even the local people next door, even the NIMBYs, might not, you know, hate it. And I'm one of them. I live in El Granada, and it's a racetrack every weekend. I mean, they don't even stay on Route 1. They take a shortcut through El Granada, and it's crazy. But if we had it for people who don't need to be rushing around in cars all the time, I think it could work. There are plenty of people who deliver food, that if they have two or three cars, they could use it and go and get food, or go out for a break, go somewhere different. But I just think there are so many other opportunities. They can have a central community hall where they can have events. You know, I think we need to think outside the box on these things. Wavecrest is a wave, whatever, it's Big Wave. That sounds like an absolute disaster, and I wasn't here to vote. But I think you need to think outside the box and look at other options. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker card that I have is Elise Coutini. Did I get that right?
That's correct. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I would like to just talk about the item 48 on the consent agenda and introduce myself. My name is Elise Coutini. I am the chief executive officer of Silicon Valley Children's Fund, and our organization has been around for more than 25 years with the sole focus of dedicating all of our resources to changing life outcomes for foster youth. And the mission of this, of our agency and how we achieve this is through our pathway programs from high school through college completion, where we provide young people with academic support, intensive life coaching, social-emotional learning skills, and financial support from high school through to college completion. I can stand here and tell you a lot of statistics. I think many of you are familiar with them. 46% to 50% high school completion rates, less than 3% complete any post-secondary education. And as an agency that's being considered as part of this proposal, I think it's important for statistics to be spoken about. I think that it's important for any organization, whether it's a governmental organization or a personal donor, to understand what your return on investment is. And through this type of coaching and pathway, we've found that our youth are completing high school at a much higher rate and matriculating into a post-secondary education at about 75%. And scholars that go through this program are 10 times more likely to complete a high school, I'm sorry, call it a post-secondary degree. But it's really a human story, and we, as we all know, foster youth are not young people who have done something wrong. There are people and children who have had things done to them and who do not feel like they belong in their communities and their families or in their schools, and not even in their own, in their own community schools. They are not a community's liability. They are a community's asset. They want what everyone else in this room wants and what we want for our own children. And at the end of the day, we want to give them the same opportunities that we provide to all young people in our community. I am excited and honored to be considered a partner in this county's commitment to improving the lives of these young people. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more speaker cards, but I wanted to say thank you for everybody that took the time to come here this morning and share your perspectives with the board. Thank you so much. And now we'll move on the agenda to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items.
I'll move to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items.
Second. I had a quick question, or a quick comment on item 15, which is the mail, the resolution authorizing the mail ballot election. I understand there was a consultant hired to analyze the results of November's all-male countywide elections, and I'm wondering if we know when that report will come forward and be shared with the board.
I'll find out.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Passes. Thank you. Now we'll move to presentations and awards, and the first item there is Employee of the Month. County Manager Malpe.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's a pleasure to present to you this morning our Employee of the Month for March 2016, Dan Bellam. Dan, would you please stand? Obviously, a popular choice, and John Byers has assured me that the following comments will not have any billable hours attached to them, so.
I did promise that. Not for the lawyer joke.
Obviously, Dan is a deputy county council. Dan's work ethic and integrity, his cooperation and client-focused nature, his judgment have been treasured by all the clients that he has worked with during his time with the county. He excels not only at understanding the parameters of the legal issues faced by county departments, but also working with his clients to find creative and appropriate ways to accomplish their objectives. Dan has proactively worked with the Human Resources staff in proposing a transition to the county's utilization of the master salary resolution as opposed to an ordinance that has streamlined the process for updating job classifications and salaries. He's also worked diligently in establishing the county's term employee program and the retirement changes that were brought about by Peppera, which were particularly complicated and presented a number of legal issues. He takes complex legal information and easily explains it, adapting his communication style to his audience, which means he talks down to the county manager so he could understand it. In addition, Dan's listening skills are incredibly honed. He often picks up on nuance that is missed by others because of his strong attention to detail. One HR partner notes, "I enjoy brainstorming with Dan as he fosters collaboration and open communication with his approachable style. His calm, rational presence and his strong skills of persuasion assist the county in making decisions regarding appropriate action in routine and complex HR issues." Indeed, the county is fortunate to have Dan as one of its many outstanding employees. There are three speakers this morning. The first is Steve Wagstaff.
President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers, good morning. A number of years ago, John Byers made the decision that Dan would be the attorney assigned to the district attorney's office, and I start off my words to you today saying thank you to John. That was That was a, something we didn't know. We hadn't worked with Dan. We didn't know what we would be receiving. And instead, what we have as our counsel is just an outstanding lawyer who, all of us who work with him, respect to the highest degree. And to that extent, he has worked with us over the years. Now, working with the district attorney's office is not the easiest thing, and Dan can tell you that. Because you've got 60 lawyers there, all of whom, at least a number of years ago, ranging from recently to me, 40 years ago, we took civil law and we think we know all the answers. And Dan had to tell us why. But what has truly evolved in our office over the years Dan has worked with us is that we realize, number one, that we don't have all the answers; number two, that Dan does have all the answers. And there's nothing that particularly lawyers want, and I know Supervisor Pine, you can agree with this, then we don't want, well, it could be this and it could be that. We want answers and we move on. And Dan gives us that. And so what we have developed in our office, and my chief deputy Karen Guadati, who is the number-one contact with him for our office can verify, is the number of times we are in meetings and what we say is, "I don't know. Ask Dan." And to that extent, he has dealt with very, very, most serious issues that we could have, major discovery type of issues, Public Records Act constantly, because we are a high-profile office, we are constantly getting Public Records Act requests, and we just, again, we ask Dan. And he always gives us an answer, and I appreciate that. It ranges from the, to the mundane, things such as when we had our Great Perfume War. And I just want to say, "I don't know. Have Dan take care of it." On that line of things. And there's so many other things like that. We're just completing a major, significant, total revision of our policy manual, and we asked Dan to review it and go through it in detail. And he had some wonderful suggestions to it. And again, he once again showed, "Ask Dan. Dan will have the answer." But perhaps best, what can sum up his, what he has done for our office and why we're so grateful to him, beyond the obvious, that he's a wonderful person, a wonderful human being who cares about his family enormously and mentions it. He lives it. He walks that talk, but he meets the client's needs. Now, you know that the county council's office is a very understanding, John is very supportive of all of his troops here. I mean, they have a thing fairly regularly, dress-down days. And we do two in the DA's office. As a matter of fact, the one day is this Thursday, when the courts are closed because of Caesar Chavez Day. We let people dress down that day. The rest of the year, dress-down days are weekends and nights. And the, but Dan will occasionally come down to meetings with us, and he then is willing in a dress-down day to put up with the grief that we're going to give him about his attire on that day, on that line, no matter what. But he reached the zenith of serving his client when there was a day when we had something happening in court, on short notice, actually, no notice, in court, and we needed our lawyer. And we needed our lawyer immediately. And we called upstairs, it was a Friday, we called upstairs to the county council's office, and Dan said, "Of course, I'll be there to help you, but I don't, it's a dress-down day. I don't have the attire." And rather than just forget about it, whatever, we'll find John and send John," or something like that, what he did is he went around his office begging and choosing for clothing so that he could be presentable for court, grabbing a jacket from somebody, some shoes from somebody else, a pair of slacks, and he went down to court and brilliantly represented our office. That's beyond.
I was shirtless for the next hour. I went.
But was it color-coordinated? We want to know.
Yeah. And, and he went down and did a wonderful job. And that sums up Dan's service to this office. And so, please, take my thanks to Dan, thanks to his family for letting us have Dan, and thanks to you, Dan, for all the good work you do. And that's why I so wholeheartedly support this resolution nominating him for Employee of the Month.
What Steve didn't explain was dress-down day in the district attorney's office is you get to wear a light-colored shirt and tie and dark suit.
President Slocum, honorable members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. First, I want to say how well-served, always well-served, we've been by county council, and we've enjoyed this great partnership with him. But in Dan's case, even though it says in Workday that Dan works for county council, we in HR know that Dan works for HR. And I say that as the highest of compliments. Dan is truly viewed as a team member, and we wouldn't have it any other way. In fact, we wouldn't even know that he has any other customers, because he's so responsive to us. And it's obvious how treasured Dan is by all of his colleagues and his clients that are here this morning to cheer him on. As you might guess, Dan is our go-to resource and our translator, and we need a translator, for the alphabet soup of employment law, ADA, FMLA, FLSA, EEO, et cetera. But what sets Dan apart is not only what he does, and he's a brilliant attorney, it's also about how he does it. When I asked our team what they appreciated about Dan, this is some of what they said. He's a trusted and a valuable resource to HR. He gets people. I think he was in HR in a former life. He has an uncanny ability to read people, and he's generous in pointing out their strengths. He's an excellent collaborator and partner. He's a tireless advocate for HR. Dan always takes the time to listen and understand. This comes from a place of genuine curiosity and respect for other people and other perspectives. He often engages us in very spirited dialogue, but that's a great thing, because it leads us to good decisions. He also helps us work out very messy, messy, messy problems in creative ways. Basically, that means he's a pro at turning lemons into lemonade. I understand that Charlie, Dan's son, recently asked him if he was good at his job. Charlie and Colette, the answer is, your dad is awesome at his job. Dan, very simply, you make us better. We are so grateful that you are our partner, and we're so proud of this honor you're receiving today.
Our final speaker this morning is John Byers, our county council.
Mr. President, honorable members of the board, all of us at the county council's office are extremely pleased at the Human Resources Department and the district attorney's office nominated Deputy County Counsel Dan Vellim as the county Employee of the Month for March 2016. Anyone who's worked with Dan would attest to this superb choice. And that our clients would take the time to nominate their assigned lawyer for this award is a high honor. So thank you, Steve, and Karen, and Donna, and all your troops for, you know, for your thoughtfulness in nominating Dan. Just a quick history about Dan, just a little history, if I may. Dan grew up as one of several siblings in the East Bay. He attended undergrad at UC Santa Barbara and law school at UC Davis. Immediately upon law school graduation, he went to work in big law, as we like to say. Dan, basically what that means is Dan toiled away at a big law firm for several years. He worked for the nationally kind of recognized law firm of Reed and Smith, and where he probably amassed countless billable hours over the years, but also was able to build a very strong set of litigation skills. But ultimately, Dan's calling was public service. And public service, fortunately for us, public service at a county. A kind of fun fact about Dan is that Dan's grandfather was the first Alameda County Council, where he apparently remained for, I believe, 20 years. So, you know, it's, you know, I think apparent that his grandfather's, you know, joy in having a, kind of a varied legal practice, coupled with a desire to serve the community that he called home, was passed on to Dan. I think that's pretty apparent. So Dan joined the county council's office in July 2010, and shortly thereafter, he assumed direct responsibility to represent the district attorney's office and the Human Resources Department, as well as the Superior Court. Even the courts have a general counsel. We represent the courts. And Dan was assigned to that position, which, you know, speaks volumes of the trust we had in him, as well as representing several school districts. It was immediately clear to us that Dan was a star. In his six years at the county, Dan has really distinguished himself as a leader and a valuable resource in the office. And in terms of his legal work, let me just say kind of one thing. Let me try to sum it up this way. When I, when I assign a project to Dan, I know that when it shows up on my desk, it's well-researched, it's, you know, well-written, and it's accurate. And I never have to trust his work product, never have to worry about it. And from where I sit, given all the things on my plate, I mean, that is, that is critical, and it's really appreciated. Until finally, let me say a little bit about Dan the person. I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Dan's great sense of humor. He's kind of the, known in the office as the king of the one-liners. As we all know, there are, you know, all of us in the county have to grapple with a lot of serious and important issues each and every day. So it's really refreshing to have a colleague that kind of makes each day a little bit more, a little bit more fun. And I think Dan's, Dan's popularity is evidenced by all of his colleagues that are in the audience today. There, probably half the office was able to make it down to support Dan. So, so again, just to wrap up, I think Dan is a wonderful choice for this award. I believe he's, he is here with his wife Andrea, and his two children, Charlie and Colette, who live in Burningame. And I think Dan would like to say a few words. As John Malpe might say, a lawyer rarely rejects an opportunity for public speaking, so.
Thank you. I'm incredibly moved. A lawyer in my office once said, "If you have the opportunity to speak, that as a lawyer, you always should." Now, I won't tell you that lawyer's name, but it rhymes with Schmavid Schmilberman. As John mentioned, my grandfather was the county council for Alameda County. When I was about 11 years old, we went to his retirement party, and he very tearfully said that he felt like the luckiest man on earth. At the time, I thought that was reserved for football players and the like. Little did I know that, over 25 years later, I would have the opportunity as well to serve the county in which I work as a deputy county council, and I would understand why he felt so lucky. In private practice, I represented some of the largest hospitals, banks, and airlines in the nation. But the people that I've worked with at the county are among the best people I've ever had the opportunity to work with. It's been my privilege to work with Steve Wagstaff, Karen Guadati, and the entire district attorney's office. I'm never more amazed than when I encounter a new deputy in that office, and each one is more dedicated than the next and serves their very difficult tasks with integrity. It's my absolute pleasure to work with Donna Valencourt and her team. I'm always amazed at their hard work, their laser focus on making the county a wonderful place to work, and they always make even the hard things fun. I'd also like to thank John Byers for making the county council's office a place where ideas and differing points of views are always welcome, and a place where integrity and hard work are paramount. I'd like to thank my wife and my kids for always making me want to come home after a long day. It's been my privilege to work here, and it is my absolute honor to be mentioned among so many great employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Just a moment. Mr. Byers, I pride myself on thinking that I know all of the lawyers in the county council's office, but I have to be honest with you, I've never seen Dan before. And I don't know what you're doing. You keep him, like, locked up in a back room with the DA or something? But what an amazing story. And Dan, just on behalf of my colleagues, thank you so much. And I'd like the question answered of, where do you keep him?
He's unsung and unherald and behind the scenes, but doing great work.
Very nice. And Dan, we have a, we're going to come down and take a picture, and maybe we could invite Andrea, Charlie, and Colette down also with the members of the board here. But we have a gift here for you in this envelope. Maybe you can get a shirt and tie for.
My office looks like a closet now, Steve, so I've got everything I need.
We're all going out?
Oh my goodness. Look at those billable hours lost. I think this is a record to go on 15 minutes without having a bad lawyer joke. That's pretty good.
Or a new lawyer joke.
Okay. Moving on. Item number two under Presentations and Awards is a presentation of commendations to the three winning artists and three honorable mentions, artists in the juried Women's View 2016 Art Exhibit. Supervisor Groom.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum, President Slocum. I hope that many of you today have had a chance to see the art exhibit out in the, out in the hallway in our, in our gallery. And if you haven't, maybe you take a look at it before you leave. It is just a super, super show. And it's a collaborative partnership with the Commission on the Status of Women and the Samhail County Arts Commission in celebration of Women's History Month. And, gosh, some of the work there is, all of the pieces are wonderful, but there are some that are just, I go out and look, I go out and look at several every day. They are so exciting, and, once again, the talent that we have in this county. And so, before I ask the winners to come forward, I want to thank Robin Rodericks, who is the chair of the Arts Commission. I want to thank Judah Tomlasoff in my office, who, who helps coordinate a lot of this. And I thought I saw Boris in the back. There he is. I want to thank Boris, who not only coordinates the county fair art show, but he helps so much with the, with the art shows that we have in our gallery. And, you know, we've got a really neat art gallery here in the county, and thank you, Boris, for all the hard work that you do. So now let me honor the, we have three winners, and we have three honorable, honorable mentions. The three winners are Jane Henry Williams, Marty Rose Springer, and Carolyn Butler, who was unable to attend today. And our honorable mention is Susan Carnahan, Natalie Strand, and Jude Pittman, who is also unable to attend. So would you please help me recognize all these great and talented artists? In fact, one person one time asked me, and they said, can you find this particular coffee shop in Leder? I said, look, I was in law enforcement, I know every coffee shop in the entire county. In any case, the Donuts with the cops is part of Redwood City Police Department, and it's really an outreach process that they have begun and have done for some time. It's, I think it's, you know, it's really a good way to break down barriers between law enforcement and the community. And I think it behooves us to really congratulate them for actually coming up with a program that is, puts people in sort of a non-confrontational, just a warm, friendly atmosphere where the, you know, police actually are, they're just human beings, they're part of our community, and obviously, the community members are the same thing. And so having that relationship between both the law enforcement people as well as the community really helps build community relationships, and it really is helpful in terms of being able to get cooperation with law enforcement. I have to say, I'm also really particularly proud of the sheriff's department, and what is, they do this in conjunction with the Community Alliance to Revitalize Our Neighborhood. It's called the KARON Program, and it does promote healthy communities by cultivating the relationship between law enforcement and the community by empowering families with education, knowledge, and resources. Actually, the KARON Project really started a number of years ago, really, I started it.
Of course you did.
Of course. It's like I hired all the deputies, too. You know, it really wasn't, it wasn't me. It was a person I had at the time. Noemi Roelis was a community worker for the sheriff's department, and the community came to us in North Fair Oaks, and they said, we want to have an organization to actually revitalize our neighborhood. And that's how lots of these things started. It was really a community-based organization, and it really developed, and it has continued. And I think it's extremely successful in building relationship with the community and the sheriff's department. I see the undersheriff Carlos Bolanos is here. They, and I have to say that my successor is Carlos, have actually done an even better job than I did. They've really grown this program and supported it in a way that is exemplary, and they put a lot of resources into it. So with that, I'd like to present this resolution to, I'm not sure if there's somebody from Redwood City Police. I do not see, I'm pretty good at recognizing their patch, but I don't see a Redwood City officer in the, in the audience. But I do see there's Deputy Victor Lopez and Jana Kaiser or Keizer.
Yes.
So I'm going to have you come up and take the proclamations.
There's the donuts.
Yeah.
Don't they want to say anything? Don't be honest.
Carlos?
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 Carlos.
Where'd he go? Did you want to speak?
for this proclamation. We're very proud of the work that we have done in creating that relationship that we currently enjoy with our community. I think former sheriff and current supervisor Horsley didn't give himself as much credit as he deserved for really starting the sheriff's office on this path. So thank you, and there's nothing more important for us than the relationship that we have with our community, and I'm honored to work with such a dedicated group of deputies and professional staff at the sheriff's office who really carry out that mission on a daily basis. So I'll turn it over to Deputy Lopez to say a few words.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good morning. I want to thank the 2020 Steering Committee for the nomination. Also want to thank the Board of Supervisors, especially Supervisor Slocum, who is a big supporter of the KARON Program. You have great staff. Carol and Irving are wonderful people to work with, so thank you for that. Like the sheriff said, us in law enforcement, we cannot do our jobs without the bond and trust of the community, and programs like this help build that. Here at the sheriff's office, we have a lot of community programs that the, that our leadership has, has, what's the word, has invested in. Sheriff Monks, undersheriff Bolanos, and Assistant Sheriff Sanchez are big believers in the community and invest a lot, and the return is worth it. You know, the community are ears and eyes out there, and we cannot do our job, or it would be very difficult for us to do our jobs without the community. So thank you.
Under Sheriff and Deputy Lopez, thank you very much for your leadership and for everything that you do in the community. It's sincerely recognized and appreciated. Let me also thank Yana Kaiser from Redwood City 2020, whose idea I think it was to start the Redwood City Police Department on this path. I don't know if you wanted to say a word or two?
Good morning. Again, my name is Yana Kaiser, and I'm the executive director of a local collaborative here called Redwood City 2020. Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to be here today and for the opportunity to just say a few words. Redwood City 2020 is a collective impact project, and so the idea is that social sector leaders come together and take on projects that are too big or too complex for any individual or agency to do alone. And the idea is to join forces, to have holistic solutions that are co-held by the leaders and community members in Redwood City and North Fair Oaks. So this project, Redwood City Together, is an initiative of Redwood City 2020, and within that project, it's a welcoming initiative. The idea is to create a community in which all people, particularly newcomers, immigrants, and long-term residents, have the opportunity to feel seen, to have their dignity recognized as contributing members of our community, and also a sense of belonging. And within the Redwood City Together initiative, we have a new awards program that's called Welcoming Stars. And so the Donuts with Deputies project and Coffee with Cops are awardees of the Welcoming Stars Initiative, and the idea is to shine light on what's going right in our community, particularly at a time where there's so much that's not right. Our intention is to underscore the good work that's underfoot, to welcome others, to build alliances, to cross divides of race and class and other social barriers, to create a united community, and highlight those so that others may follow suit. And so we're just delighted to get to honor our partners from the county and from the police department in their tremendous work to ensure that there are relationships built between law enforcement and local community members so that everyone in our community feels safe and part of it. So we're delighted to be here, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Yana. Let's move on now to item four, which is a presentation of a proclamation designating March 30, 2016, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. First, least I forget, I'd make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As some of you know, I'm very proud to be a Vietnam veteran and very proud to have the opportunity today to present this proclamation. I was in country in 1966, which was very early on, and obviously, those memories are still with me today. As you know, at the height of the Vietnam conflict, there were some half a million U.S. soldiers in country, and we all know, well, for some of us that are old enough to remember, that President Nixon ended the war with the Treaty of Paris that was signed in January of 1973. And at that time, actually, the last American troops left the Republic of South Vietnam, March 30, March 30 was actually the final day for the withdrawal of the final troops from Vietnam. And so it gives me a great deal of pleasure this morning to, I'm assuming Gary Higgins is here. There he is. Come on forward. Gary is the president of the Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 464, and I'm going to present this proclamation, Gary, to you with a great deal of thanks. For those of us that are Vietnam veterans, this is important because when we came home, it wasn't like today. We were not necessarily welcomed with open arms. There was a different sort of mood in the country. And so today, to have this honor and to say, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day is a joy and an honor. And Gary, thank you for being here.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm Gary Higgins, and I have been the president of the Vietnam Vets of America. We're Chapter 464, and we meet right here in Redwood City, and we meet on the fourth Saturday of every month at 10:00 at the Veterans Memorial Senior Center on Madison. So if you're a Vietnam veteran, or, you know, you don't really have to be a Vietnam veteran. We have associate Vietnam veterans who are supporters of Vietnam veterans, who can also join our group. And we were chartered by Congress around 1980, and our chapter was chartered in 1990, and I'm also a charter member of that. One of the things that I was looking at the other day was, the Purple Heart magazine talks about what the supervisor just talked about, was on March 30, 1973, all U.S. troops withdrew from Vietnam under the terms of the Treaty of Paris. There were no ticker-tape parades honoring the veterans, no triumphant marches or speeches as there had been at the end of each of the world wars. America's Vietnam veterans return home to silence, or worse, in some cases, to denigration for having served their country during a controversial war. The U.S. Senate officially designated Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day on March 30, 2011, and in the years following, most states have continued to recognize this day to salute all who served in this war. Vietnam veterans have also been a driving force behind the respect given to today's veterans. A military member in uniform today garners high regard and appreciation from the public. The Vietnam generation didn't want to allow what happened to them to happen to any others. For this, your service and your sacrifice, we say thank you. Welcome home, and to those who didn't make it home, thank you for your sacrifice. On March 30, make a special effort to say Welcome Home and honor a Vietnam veteran you know. Encourage your community to take measures to commemorate this day for Vietnam veterans and continue to honor the service of all veterans throughout the year. And my welcome home was right here at the bus station on Brewster, and my dad picked me up, and I discharged at the, in Oakland on April 30 of 1970. There are certain dates I remember, you know, and that's one of them. I also remember the date that I was supposed to show up for selective service, too, July 24, 1968, a day that will live in infamy, right? But, you know, I'm very proud of my service. I'm proud of the guys that I've been with and the guys that I've met, you know, that I've been involved in veterans' activities. They're sitting back here. There's one here. This is, this is Mike Cooney. He's from Pacifica. And then you have William Jackson back there, and Romi Basetto. Romi Basetto's, they're both longtime legionnaires right here. They're also members of Vietnam Vets of America. Many of us are members of multiple veterans groups, not just one. I think I'm six or seven. I think it's about seven. But this whole week, we had a car show this last weekend over at the Veterans Memorial Building, which we'll have next year, too, and we'll try to let everybody know more in advance. I was here the last meeting, but I got here way too late to make any announcement about it, and they were doing the noise abatement thing, and there was about 200 people that were waiting in line. So I, you know, I said, well, I don't think we're going to get there. So, but tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow we'll be going up. There's Legislative Day at Sacramento where we go, a bunch of veterans. We go from each office to each office, talk to the assembly people and the senators about veterans' issues that we want, you know, want them to take a look at. And then there's one last thing coming up is April 2 at Golden Gate National Cemetery at 11:00 a.m., honoring veterans who served during the Vietnam War. It will be, public veterans are cordially invited. It will be reclamation and presentation of Vietnam veteran lapel pins to all Vietnam era veterans. So if anyone would like to come up there, you can honor the veterans at the Golden Gate National Cemetery, and that's Saturday at 11:00. All you have to do is show up. So I just want to thank again the Board of Supervisors for giving us this proclamation, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm very proud of the San Mateo County Veterans Service Office that this board voted some time ago to create, and I know I saw Norman earlier, I don't know if he's still here, but Norman, maybe you would come forward and just say a quick word on behalf of the Vietnam veterans and things that are going on in the Veterans Service Office.
Thank you, President Slocum, honorable members of the board. It really is an honor to be here in front of you to say Welcome Home to the Vietnam veterans. Your service to our country, your dedication to the veterans now, we are grateful for the work that you've done and you continue to do. Please make sure that you let a veteran know of the sacrifices that
I'm proud of the guys that I've been with and the guys that I've met, you know, that I've been involved in veterans activities. They're sitting back here. There's one here. This is, uh, this is Mike Cooney. He's from Pacifica. And then you have William Jackson back there and Romy Basetto. Romy Basetto's, they're both longtime legionnaires right here. They're also members of Vietnam Vets of America. Many of us are members of multiple veterans groups, not just one. I think I'm six or seven. I think it's about seven. But this whole week, we had a car show this last weekend over at the Veterans Memorial Building, which we'll have next year, too, and we'll try to let everybody know more in advance. I was here the last meeting, but I got here way too late to make any announcement about it, and they were doing the noise abatement thing, and there was about 200 people that were waiting in line. So I, you know, I said, well, I don't think we're gonna get there. So, but tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow we'll be going up. There's Legislative Day at Sacramento where we go, a bunch of veterans, we go from each office to each office, talk to the assembly people and the senators about veterans issues that we want, you know, want them to take a look at. And then there's one last thing coming up is April the 2nd at Golden Gate National Cemetery at 11:00 a.m., honoring veterans who served during the Vietnam War. It will be, public veterans are cordially invited. It will be reclamation and presentation of Vietnam veteran lapel pins to all Vietnam-era veterans. So if anyone would like to come up there, you can honor the veterans at the Golden Gate National Cemetery, and that's Saturday at 11:00. All you have to do is show up. So I just want to thank again the Board of Supervisors for giving us this proclamation, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute if I could. I'm very proud of the San Mateo County Veterans Service Office that this board voted some time ago to create. And I know I saw Norman earlier, I don't know if he's still here, but Norman, maybe you would come forward and just say a quick word on behalf of the Vietnam veterans and things that are going on in the Veterans Service Office.
Thank you, President Slocum, honorable members of the board. It really is an honor to be here in front of you to say Welcome Home to the Vietnam veterans. Your service to our country, your dedication to the veterans now, we are grateful for the work that you've done and you continue to do. Please make sure that you let a veteran know of the sacrifices that they have and their families have gone through. We thank you for your service again. Welcome home in behalf of the Human Service Agency, the county Veteran Services Office. Welcome home. Welcome home. Thank you.
Thank you, Norman. And now we move on to item number five under Presentations, which is a homeless system redesign that would be presented by Iliana Rodriguez, the Director of the Human Services Agency, and team.
Good morning, Mr. President, honorable members of the board, Mr. Malp, Mr. Byers. I'm here this morning to provide you with information regarding our county's homeless system redesign and our new strategic plan to end homelessness. This morning, we'll share information on the homeless in San Mateo County process and our strategic goal to end homelessness by 2020. With me here today is Megan Kirchhoff-Shorts from our partners at Focus Strategies. Focus Strategies provided technical assistance during this process and analysis of our data. Megan will be here and available to answer any technical questions. This year marks the sunset of our HOPE Plan developed in 2006. We've come a long way, but we haven't ended homelessness in our county. We've made many, we've had many accomplishments. We've increased the stakeholder collaboration. There are high levels of engagement and collaboration among our homeless safety net providers and stakeholders. We've increased the intensive outreach and engagement to the homeless in our communities through your funding of the HOT Teams, provided homeless services to an average of 3,000 individuals annually. The Department of Housing, with your support, helped create in excess of 994 affordable housing units during that decade and 96 supportive housing units for residents with serious mental health issues in collaboration with our Mental Health Association. Progress was made in spite of challenges which couldn't be foreseen at the time of the development of our HOPE Plan. We couldn't anticipate the collapse of a banking system, the recession, and now our local housing crises. Let's start with a quick look at our data. As you'll see, the light blue are individuals in our shelters. The darker blue is our unsheltered population. This latest point-in-time count shows us that we had a dip of about 24% in those unsheltered individuals since 2013. We're just about at our 2009 levels. There are fewer unsheltered people. The count found 775 individuals unsheltered. That's a 40% decrease over 2013. The vast majority of our unsheltered individuals are, have, are single men with at least one Locations of our unsheltered people, many are living on the streets. The rest are in encampments and a large portion in RVs and vehicularly housed. Forty-three percent of these individuals have at least one disability, a behavioral health challenge or a chronic health issue. For providers working with the unsheltered people, it can take a long time to develop that relationship and trust, and some are treatment-resistant. There are many different, there are many different types of services available for people who are at risk or are experiencing homelessness, from preventative services to help people stay housed, to those intensive services and permanent supportive housing. It's important to note that people do not need to move through the entire system to become housed. Sometimes, a family may need only prevention to stay housed, or may have a short stay in emergency shelter and can be returned to housing. The old paradigm of homeless services was that people tended to go through the entire spectrum, from emergency shelter to transitional housing and ultimately being housed. However, in the new paradigm, services are tailored to meet the specific needs of our individuals with the goal of providing short-term assistance and connecting people with permanent housing as soon as possible. As is, we are committed to a culture of continuous improvement, client experience, stakeholder engagement, innovation, and focus on results, among other things, has been the history of our county. Collaboration continues to be critical as we embark on this new plan. How did we get here? In 2014, HSA presented to your board on the issue of homelessness. Under the direction, under your direction, we committed to answer key questions by analyzing the data available from our homeless information system. Review the overall homeless system to determine if it was right-sized. Review recent federal policies to ensure that our programs and our data systems were in compliance. Look at opportunities to collaborate with county departments and stakeholders and update our HOPE Plan. Based on that charge, we analyzed the data. We worked with our providers to improve the data systems and the data integrity and completed a homeless system redesign. In addition, during this time, we responded to immediate needs, including the expansion of the HOT Team and implementing a housing locator pilot program. We're also working with the county manager's office and other county departments in new ways to collaborate across our department silos on the issues pertaining to housing and homelessness. The system, as you'll see, we started back in June with a kickoff of a leadership team. It consisted of some community learning circles. Over 70 individuals from our community-based organizations, our cities, our faith-based, our providers, the county manager's office, leadership within the county, and your legislative staff participated in five learning circles. We reviewed the performance standards of our current system and how it was functioning, introduced new topics such as diversion so that we all understood and operated from a similar foundation. We talked about coordinated entry and how could that be implemented here in the county and how would it look? We discussed our transitional or interim housing and how to best utilize that and how to get people to permanent housing quicker. In addition, there were key interviews of informants, the county elected officials, the leadership, our safety net providers, and our homeless and services providers. We brought back at various junctures where we were to the HOPE IAC Council and the Continuum of Care Steering Committees for feedback. In terms of the homeless system data analysis, we've reviewed our clients, their demographics, the financial information, how were we investing the dollars and how the system was performing over a two-year period. And we received, obviously, technical assistance from the providers because the providers are the ones that enter the data, whether it's the core agencies or our shelter providers into the HMIS system. And then we did some data modeling with that, which leads us today, brings us here today to present to you the key points of the strategic plan. Entries from homelessness. What we find out when we looked at our data was that 35% of the people entering our system were coming from what would be a house situation. They were sharing housing with friends or family, some from their own housing and some from institutions. In our current system, we generally use a one-size-fits-all. There's opportunity to have more individualized services and divert some of these individuals directly into housing or maintaining them housed. We looked at the lengths of stays. As you can see, in the emergency shelter, adults average about 45 days and families about 60. Transitional housing is about 159 days for an individual and a little over three months for families, just about similar timeframe in our rapid rehousing. The goal here is to have a shorter length of stay, shorter lengths of stays while assisting families and individuals with connecting them to housing options. These lengths are relatively short compared to the national average, which is a positive sign in our system. The lengths of stay could be improved with the ideal goal of an average of 30 days in emergency shelter and 90 days in transitional housing. We looked at how successful are we, or what percentage of individuals exit to permanent housing? And you can see a lower spectrum out of emergency shelter. The individuals exit 17% of the times to housing, 27% for families. It's much higher in transitional housing situations, and we do probably equally as well when we rapidly rehouse. And the county, through Envision Shelter Network, now known as Life Moves, has attempted this in limited format.
Iliana, if I may, just a quick question. What's the difference between transitional housing and rapid rehousing?
Transitional, you're in the program, and I think you have some certain, you develop a plan, save some money, looking for a job that's, we're getting employed, could be part of it, and maybe a job that leads to better wages. Rapidly rehousing, you may have experienced housing, you're behind in your rent or something, but you could maintain a house, and they'll rapidly rehouse you as opposed to putting you through the entire program.
Okay, thank you.
Given the drastically challenging housing market in our county, we know that locating permanent housing is extremely difficult, that those who are homeless can face additional barriers to obtaining housing, and that providers are working intensively and creatively with clients to help them identify and move into housing, rental housing, shared housing, and other options. They are trying to be extremely creative, given our circumstances. We looked also at the cost per exit, and you'll see here the cost for emergency shelter for an individual who exits to housing. It's about $3,600. For a family, just under, just under $18,500. Transitional housing goes up somewhat exponentially, and it's lower for those rapidly rehoused. The difference in costs are quite noticeable when comparing transitional housing and rapid rehousing, particularly for families with transitional housing showing as significantly more expensive. This is one of the reasons why communities that are making headway to reducing homelessness are investing in more rapid rehousing. Returns to homelessness. So if they go through each of these systems, if you will, and exit to housing, does it stick? That's the success of the program, right? Is it sticking after 12 months? You'll see that in emergency shelter, individuals return at a much higher rate to homelessness. And it's only 2% of those families who return. In terms of transitional housing, you still have the individuals returning to homeless situations, and it's much less, it's pretty consistent almost for families across the board in whatever program they enter.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
I don't understand, well, rapid rehousing to me means you're getting somebody into housing, or you're, either that or you're preserving what they're already in, right? So in traditional housing, isn't that the same thing?
Transitional housing.
Oh, okay. I misread it, sorry.
It's okay. So from our system components, the rate of return for families is fairly low, in particular, and that's a strength of our current system, especially with the families we serve. The adults obviously have higher barriers and are, and do not have as much support outside when they exit to housing. They may not have family relatives to help them along, and they encounter more challenges. We looked at our current system. Doesn't mean it's all the beds, but these are what we have in terms of placing people. We have approximately 896 beds currently in our inventory through a wide variety of programs operated by our community-based organizations that provide the emergency shelter, the transitional housing, and the rapid rehousing. So building upon the foundation of the HOPE Plan, key strategies have been identified through the analysis of the system performance data and collaboration with our stakeholders to move us forward. Here are the overarching goals that were a result of our planning process. Currently, we have various system components, but we need more of a cohesive strategic system in place to address homelessness, including veterans, families, youth, and people exiting from institutions. So how are we gonna get there? There are four key principles to creating a housing crisis resolution system. First, housing-focused. The system is built upon the understanding that homelessness is a crisis, the loss of housing, and the solution is to quickly return people to a house situation as soon as able. It's person-centered. The system is focused on meeting people's needs for housing. It respects client choice. Services will meet clients where they are and engage them in resolving their housing crisis. The system is also easily understood and navigated by the homeless people with minimal barriers to access. A system is data-informed. The data is collected, it's analyzed to understand whether the system is meeting its objectives and to improve our effectiveness. Decisions are made about what approaches to invest are informed with the data. Effective use of our resources. The system is designed to achieve the best possible results with the resources at our Here's a design of what a housing crisis resolution system would look like. Our current homeless service model is focused on how to refer clients into emergency shelter and transitional housing. While it addresses the immediate shelter needs for our homeless residents and was viable, and it's a buzz-a-bible strategy in 2006, researchers showed that the best strategy to end homelessness is a focus on resolving housing as a crisis and returning people to a house situation as quickly as possible. We're moving away from a one-size-fits-all. This is the picture of the crisis resolution system. The component of the systems outlined in the blue do not currently exist in our system. The new strategic plan will build that core infrastructure to fill those gaps in our system and create a coordinated way to resolve the housing crisis to prevent individuals and families from becoming homeless, and for those who are literally homeless, provide them with the necessary support to return them to a house situation. So how do you create that system? Shifting to a housing-first approach with lower barriers to access. Transform our existing set of programs into a housing crisis resolution system. Develop and implement shelter diversion or housing counseling. Diversion is a strategy that helps people who are experiencing a housing crisis to preserve their current housing situation or make alternative arrangements without having to enter the shelter system. If there's a safe alternative to remain housed, it is better to support the household in staying housed rather than them entering the system. It's also better for the system as a whole so that just shelter resources are reserved for people who are literally homeless or who have no other options. To develop a coordinated entry system for our homeless services. Coordinated entry is a set of policies and processes that govern how people access the system. The health system, behavioral health in particular, has done this successfully for a number of years. Instead of entry policies established program by program, there's one process for the whole system. There can be multiple entryways, but people access services through entry points, receiving standardized assessment, and there's a consistent process. standardized assessment, and there's a consistent process. By right sizing our interim housing or our transitional housing, as we start moving people or diverting people from shelter and help staying them stayed housed or rapidly rehousing them, you create some inventory and you can place more people, adjusting it. Is it more family spots that we need, or do we need more individual slots? Expanding our rapid rehousing services. Rapid rehousing programs provide time-limited services and financial assistance to secure and maintain a house situation. The three core components of rapid rehousing are housing identification, short-term rent assistance, and case management services focusing on their housing stability. Our community has some existing rapid rehousing, and we believe that creating additional rapid rehousing capacity will provide more families and adults with options to rapidly become rehoused. Working with the Department of Housing to maximize our permanent support of housing and using data to continually review and improve our system. We work with our partners to end homelessness among veterans, and we do that, we are utilizing technical assistance right now from HUD to help identify and implement the best practices in ending veteran homelessness, including creating an inventory of available housing services for veterans, collaborating with partners to create a master list of veterans who are homeless, and conducting case conference meetings with service providers to identify and support the housing options of each veteran. It's similar to our HOT, but it's strictly focused on our vets. Using our housing locator services and continue to support new housing opportunities for veterans that are coming up throughout the county. Align with the Veterans Board, with your board's priority of supporting families. We will be redesigning the existing emergency and transitional shelter programs for families to include enhanced links to rapid rehousing, expanding our housing locator services, and exploring creative options such as tiny homes. The implementation of diversion will also help preserve housing for those who are currently housed and help prevent entry into shelter, which again would increase our capacity until the Maple Street buildout is complete. In line with the county's commitment to youth, our goal is to end youth homelessness. We'll be working with our partners to gain a deeper understanding on the issue of youth homelessness in the county to ensure appropriate support for youth, including our former foster youth. This process really did help us identify those issues that are unique to this population. So we're setting up some meetings with the providers who specialize in youth and some other individuals who can better inform us on the process and the needs of our youth. We have a strong history of collaboration in our county. My colleagues are all at the table, working to ensure that clients have a permanent or interim housing plan prior to discharge. Our goal is to reach functional zero by 2020. Functional zero means that any homeless individual or family who enters through the new coordinated homeless system and cannot be diverted will be offered transitional housing and rehoused as quickly as possible. An end to homelessness means that the community has a systemic response in place that ensures homelessness is prevented whenever possible, and when it occurs, that it should be rare, brief, and ideally non-recurring. We would like to ask your board support in adopting this new vision as we use this strategic plan and the principles outlined here to reformat our homeless system. I'd like to thank the Shelter and Safety Net providers who work tirelessly to provide essential services to some of the most vulnerable county residents. Life Moves, Samaritan House, Project We Hope, our Mental Health Association, the Core Services, Star Vista Cora, Home &amp; Hope. They were all there informing us and participating. I'd also like to thank the many partners who participated in the learning circles, city leaders, law enforcement were there, our Veterans Affairs Office, the community-based organizations, including One East Palo Alto and Hip Housing, and the Veterans Resource Center. My county colleagues have been instrumental in the development of the plan, including the county manager's office and your legislative staff, the health system, and the Department of Housing. I'd like to thank my staff, particularly Selena Toylee, who's on a much-needed vacation this week, and Jessica Silverberg. They operate on very little sleep and focus strategy for their technical assistants. Nicole Pollak, who is Assistant Agency Director, because of her focus on operations, I get to focus on all these other things. And finally, I'd like to thank your board for your vision, direction, and support as we tackle this issue.
Thank you, Eliana. We turn to board member comments now, questions? Supervisor Horsley.
Well, one of the things I was thinking about is, especially as you're talking about homeless, dysfunctional youth, and I am particularly interested in that, especially for foster kids. And so I do want to stay engaged in that conversation, and I've asked my staff members to be engaged in that conversation as well. One of my thoughts is that, you know, I have three children, and only one of them was totally self-sufficient from the time he finished college. The other ones, you know, had to come back to home. And so my concern about with foster kids is that they don't have parents. You know, once they get out of the system at 21 years of age and they go off into the world, maybe when they're 23, things don't work out so well. And they end up falling back. And so, you know, I know that's kind of difficult to, you know, to do a longitudinal study on it, but just, you know, again, from my own experiences, my own children, I know that. You know, I had to help them, the other two, and they're doing fine now. And I think that's probably true of all parents, that that's, you know, you're kind of, you know, parents are kind of the safety net. And in this case, the only safety net really is us. And so I'm really interested in that, and I do want to continue sort of monitoring, you know, being part of the conversation, and do whatever I can to support you and make sure that our kids, especially foster kids, don't end up on the street. And I know we are working on a coast, we have, Coastside has a lot of unsheltered homeless. We are working with Home &amp; Hope to try and figure out some way of getting people into rapid rehousing. But there've been, some of those people have been homeless for so long, it's really very difficult. And the other is that oftentimes, because they are on the coast, there's something about that, they just don't want to leave, and they don't want to come over to Maple Street. So we're trying to figure out some way of having congregations take some responsibility for that. And at the same time, we also, I know that there's a project for Mid-Penn that's on the, actually on the agenda. And that was one of my, we urged them to see if they could buy a building for preservation and at least have one of those units available for, you know, homeless family. And hopefully that's going to work out. But just wanted to reiterate that I am really interested in foster kids. I used to, I was on a CASA for a period of time. I did, I did an intern, or not, I was actually a mentor for a young man for a period of time. And so I've maintained that interest and want to continue in that conversation. So I know that we have one of the, we have, there's a lot of challenges, and there's a family utilization program vouchers, and about 97 of them, and only one has been able to be utilized by a foster kid. So somehow, if we could increase their utilization with foster kids?
Through the chair. We have been working with the Department of Housing on the vouchers and linking more kids with vouchers. And with the pilot project that we have going with ABOD, one of the pilot population that they're working with are those individuals with the vouchers and trying to link them. So we're on it. We are also in contact with Sarah Rosen, all through your office, and have some chats. So we'll be at the table chatting foster youth.
Thank you. Supervisor Groom?
Thank you. This is great, Eliana. Just really a piece, a good piece of work. I'm very interested in the microhousing, and I noticed that, you know, in our, in our housing task force, we've talked, microhousing is on one of our 30 points. And Samaritan House is, there was an article in the paper the other day, or yesterday or today, that about $10 million that he is estimating for this microhousing. Can you fill us in a little bit more detail on that?
Through the chair. Unfortunately, I don't have any information on that project, but we can certainly look into it and get back to the board.
But I mean, is the, are you, you were working with Shelter Network, though? Or are you working with Shelter Network on some of these, on some of these issues?
Not currently. We are at the initial stage of investigating the whole tiny housing thing. I think the Department of Housing may have something on that.
Perhaps Mr. Cole can.
Thank you.
Good morning. Ken Cole, Department of Housing. The Tiny House Initiative at this point is under a study contract with the Mental Health Association, Samaritan House, and Mid-Penn. That's under the Creative Housing Initiatives category that just recently was funded. And so we're looking conceptually at it, and I think what Samaritan's House leadership was describing was the early stages of their concept. And it certainly, although $10 million is a pretty big dollar amount when it jumps out in the headline, that's sort of looking at the per-unit cost. But it's a wide-open field right now, looking at the best practices, best models, and getting us to the point where then we can start looking at how this might work in our community and what kind of property and zoning would be required.
Mr. Cole, are you, you and your department are actively engaged with Shelter Network?
With, yes, we're actively engaged with Shelter Network as well.
And do you think, do you think it's, that it is going to make sense for us to, if we're able to find land, if we're able to find the right location? I mean, do you think that this, this microhousing is a good thing to concentrate on?
I think microhousing is certainly one of many facets that we, we can't leave any stone unturned, I'm mixing metaphors rapidly here, that...
I do it all the time.
Yes, we're going to be looking at any, any option. It's certainly been effectively used in other communities. It presents some challenges because it's so new and it's so different than standard building codes. So there's some real challenges, there's efficiencies. I know it's been used well on a transitional housing basis to help people go from emergency shelter to transition and then permanent. It is not where I think we want to go for permanent housing. That's, but we're early in the concepts, working with our partners in the community.
Thank you. As I said, it's something that I've been reading about in other cities in the United States, and so I'd like to know, you know, I'd kind of like to be kept informed if I can.
And I'd also say it's not just for the homeless. It's also an option for secondary units, for other, other housing, other groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a quick one on, obviously I know about the emergency shelter beds and transitional housing beds, but this rapid rehousing is something new that we've been really looking into. And I noticed the numbers in the inventory are fairly low compared to the transitional and the emergency shelter. Are we continuing to try to locate other housing stock that can be used for rapid rehousing?
Through the chair, yes, we have. Through the contract with ABOD Services, the board approved back in December. We started in January, but a full launch in February. And I can certainly provide the board with some information on how that pilot is going.
And these numbers here are all in county?
Yes.
Okay. So you show that we have 896 beds, per se, in the county, and those that are unsheltered now are like 775, something like that. So that's over and above all those beds we have?
Some of those are Mental Health Association placement, so they're, they may be domestic violence, so it's partitioned out. They may, they may be in various programs, and individuals may not fit within those program criteria.
I think the thing that is very impressive here, one, the numbers, as you brought them down for the unsheltered, but also to have the data. You know, it's often very difficult to put your finger on something if you don't know what it is you're trying to deal with. And I think this really helps, and I think if we can, you know, continue, this is a very difficult county for shelter and for housing. So the fact that you've been able to find that many rapid rehousing beds is impressive. And as you say, the more you get there, the more room it opens up at some of the transitional ones. So I mean, it is circular, and it, I think it's really, you're on the right path. I think it's great work.
Thank you.
Supervisor Plow?
Thanks for the presentation. I had a couple of comments and two questions. First, I'd really like to, Supervisor Horsley, point that, you know, parents as the safety net, you know, you really think about that. You know, fortunately, most of us and most people live in the county. If someone was in a situation where they didn't have a place to live, right, we would, we would, as family members, take care of them. But of course, now our role in the county is, unfortunately, there are people who don't have anyone to look to but us. And that's why our work is so important. You know, Eliana, as we've talked about, you know, I'm very interested in this treatment resilient, resistant population. Because when we talk about ending homelessness by 2020, you know, the toughest segment is the folks who, you know, resist treatment. And, you know, I've had a lot of experience with this in South City and San Bruno. We had a very substantial encampment for a while in San Bruno, and it was torn, taken down. Mike Calagie was a great assistant to that. And we offered places for everyone there, and no one took one. And it was a dire, third-world circumstance in that encampment. And you looked at the people and the conditions they were living in, and it was completely appalling, but we had places for them, they wouldn't take them. And they have, they have the civil rights to reject them. So I really think your plan should put a big emphasis on this treatment-resistant population. And I think we should be careful about talking about ending homelessness by 2020 unless we really think we have a key, a key to the treatment-resistant. Because, and I think it'd be very helpful also to, when we look at the unsheltered population today, you know, how many of those are treatment-resistant? Because it's, you know, we've seen just how difficult that population is. So anyway, I think that's something that the program should really put a heavy focus Two other quick comments. As I've said many times, you know, I think the HOT team is a tremendously valuable tool. I'm so pleased that we've expanded it. Now, that is one, the only tool I'm aware of, of intervening with the treatment-resistant in that, you know, you continuously look for the angle to persuade someone to move into housing. And also, I've heard some good things about the section, the housing locator, particularly for Section 8. I was frankly a little skeptical about the housing locator, and I think my mind's been changed a little bit because you really need help finding, you really need, you need a third party to go out and find, find somebody who'll take that Section 8 voucher. So I'm glad that's happening. And then a last comment, you know, on the microhousing, which, you know, like Supervisor Groom, I've been, you know, reading some of the press on, you know, quite interesting. But I guess my question is, when land costs are so exceedingly high, you know, does, does microhousing really work? Because, you know, microhousing is typically just one, one level, right? You know, and if you're going to have the land costs, you know, maybe, I don't know if there's such a thing as microhousing with two stories, because the land costs are just so extraordinary. So anyway, something to think about. So my quick questions are, when we say housing first, what is our current thinking as to the homeless that have alcohol and drug problems? And, you know, what's, many of our shelters, I think only maybe one shelter accepts those individuals?
Through, through the board. We've been working to enhance the HOT teams and received authority to work with the Health Department, who has launched a pilot for street medicine. And they've had a half-time nurse's position out in the community and working with Ravenswood's clinic, I think it is, providing some stabilization in the field. And what we are working currently on with Measure A Dollars to fund a full-time nurse in the field and a third-year resident to provide medical assistance to the more resistant. I think, we haven't had these discussions yet, but I think the premise is that if you can stabilize them with perhaps their mental health issues and meet them where they're at, you may eventually get them to accept a... at, you may eventually get them to accept assistance. So, it's treating them in the field, and ideally, they'll accept some help. So, it's being enhanced, and I hope, I know that the departments are currently speaking. I don't know when we can see that roll out. But I know our health partners are here, and I don't know if, Dr. Erlich, you don't know what's hap-
[inaudible]
Right. So, Measure A will be expanding it, and that'll be a new component to our HUD team. And I think it's, I think it's going to be successful. I'm optimistic.
Yeah, that sounds like it might be helpful with the treatment-resistant. The question I was going to, though, is, as I understand it today, I think there's only one shelter that will house someone if they are, if they're not sober. And there's, you know, there's a school of thought that everybody needs to be housed, even if they're not, you know, they have problems with drugs or alcohol. And, you know, what is our current thinking about that?
I think there's some discussion about the usage of the expansion area to the Maple Street, and there may be an area, there may be an area designated for individuals who, who may not be dry yet, but separate from that, that building. So, something to look at, and if it's not, we can certainly interject in those conversations.
Because isn't there, there's one facility, right, in East Palo Alto that-
We hope.
Yeah, and that's the only one. So, and I think, I'd be interested to hear back from you on that. Because, again, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of advocacy for, for providing those people with housing in order to help them recover. But obviously, it's challenging because, you know, they can be very disruptive, et cetera.
Well, you want to operate a safe shelter. So, we are currently working with the providers and our core partners, who, who are the individuals making referrals, about what the barriers or the criteria is to entry and what makes sense. So, nothing solid yet, because it's a delicate conversation, but we're hopeful that, that we'll get to some consensus among the group.
Okay. And then, my last question, and maybe it might be hard to know the answer to this one, is, you know, we have a lot of people throughout the county who are, you know, helping, trying to help the homeless. And do we have like a estimated budget for how much we, you know, we spend on, on this important work? You constantly read about San Francisco budget, I can't remember their numbers, but, I mean, do we have a number? And how much do we spend on trying to help the homeless? Do we have that number?
We do. I know that the total, we can break it out and get that to the board, but it's in excess of $17 million annually right now with our federal funding, our Measure A, the department money, personnel that, that are in. It's in excess of $17 million, but we'll certainly get the board a breakdown of those dollars.
Sounds like a deal compared to San Francisco. Thank you.
Thank you. Eliana, I'm wondering, wondering if you could just focus in briefly on the veteran, veterans' homelessness issue. And there was a chart that you had, end veterans homelessness this year. Could you just quickly review the, where we, where we started, where we are today, what those numbers look like?
I'm not sure that the slide said, we're ending it this year. We are working at, we're coordinating with HUD, who has provided technical assistance to a number of communities to help us solve this, creating the master lists of the veterans currently in our homeless system, and then working similar to that HUD framework in terms of addressing their barriers with the appropriate partners at the table. Obviously, veterans have some additional supports that are not available to our other population, but we are working with them, and we're recruiting an individual to spearhead that.
And what's the current number?
184, last time I checked.
Thank you. Just one other question, if I could. It's sort of related, but maybe a little off-topic. There's a homeless encampment in East Palo Alto, and I don't know if you or the HUD team or other folks have been there. Are you familiar?
I've heard about the encampment in East Palo Alto, yes.
So, it's still there?
My understanding from the police chief is they'll clear it out, and once they clear it out, they'll quickly congregate again in the area or just down, down the way.
On the street.
Most, what I heard from the chief, was, are not residents. As you know, we have an issue with Santa Clara, who closed down their northern shelter. So, we're having their homeless population routinely in the East Palo Alto area.
And do we know that for a fact? Do we have data on that, or is that just, that's what we think's going on?
I believe that when they've done the clearing out or engaged them, they were homeless, many in Santa Clara County, and didn't have a connection to our county.
Okay, thank you. Let me just thank you and Jessica and Selena and Nicole. Supervisor Horsley and I co-chair, I think we co-chair, that's the right word, yeah, the Hope, the Hope Committee. And I think we have, you know, a great respect for the team and all the work that has gone on to this. It's been a, a long process. It seems like it's now come together, and it's time to begin to execute on that plan. But thank you to all the team members, and I know Jessica does the, probably the bulk of the work on this issue and the learning circles and all that. So, thank you to Jessica and the entire HSA team. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before you go, just, but one quick comment. You know, I know, I was going to make a comment about the street medicine team, is that, and I think you pretty much covered it, that, that is one potential way of getting those treatment-resistant people. So, I really would support that. I was also going to say that, I was at a, Ken and I, Cole, Ken Cole and I were at a recent meeting with our local Congresswoman, and she was kind of talking to, well, the city council people as well as realtors, and they indicated a willingness, well, we have about 400 vouchers that are unutilized, and they made a commitment that they would actually get those vouchers used over the next four months. So, one of the things we might do in terms of this finding, this rapid rehousing, is engaging the apartment owners and engaging this, the real estate industry as well. They seem to be, well, they're, they're concerned, and they seem to be willing to work with us, and hopefully, they'd be willing to work with us on this project.
That's a great idea. We'll make sure Abode and the office connects with them.
Thanks for all the good work that you've done, as well as the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Tissier?
Just a quick question. When you talked about the county-wide collaboration, you have the cities in there. Have you worked at all with Millbrae on their veterans' housing? It was at the BART station. I know we all, many of us went to a rally there to kind of encourage the city to, you know, approve the veterans' housing there. Have you worked at, on that level with cities?
Not intimately. We're in discussions with them and certainly encouraging the project to move forward and monitoring it so that we're there, present when the units become available.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Slocum, just a quick comment. There was a headline this morning, I think, speculating there was a little, there was some kind of a grass fire or fire in Menlo Park, and the headline was that it, the thought was it might have been caused by a homeless encampment.
Do we, Mr. Byers, do we need to vote on the plan or anything?
No, this is simply identified as a presentation today.
Okay. Thank you, Eliana.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Let me check in with my colleagues at this moment. The next item on the agenda is a study session on the residential impact fees, which may take a few minutes. I'm wondering about if anybody needs to take a break right now for five minutes, let's say?
About 10 minutes.
About seven minutes. Okay, we're back. I made a mistake. I'll be the first to admit it. I have three speaker cards here from the previous item, and I'd like to call on these people to have their opportunity to address the board. First is Terry Chin, second Pastor Baines, and third Martin Fox. Two minutes, please, each.
Good morning, members of the board. Oh, there we go. Now, that's right. Okay. I'm glad to have an opportunity to come before you and speak in favor of this plan that you just heard about, the homeless system redesign. My name is Terry Chin. I am the manager of the Fair Oaks Community Center. We're one of the core service agencies, and so, I kind of speak on behalf of Fair Oaks as well as, I think, some of the other core agencies. And I also want to say, I speak on behalf of a few folks I've met recently, Donna, Brad, Crescencia, and Stephanie. Donna being a mom who was divorced, grew up in Woodside, divorced twice because of medical situations, found herself for about three months sleeping in her car, sometimes getting a motel, sometimes staying with friends, who we recently helped rehouse in Redwood City by helping her move into a shared housing situation, when I found that it would be, that, that her ability to earn income was much different when she was housed and when she wasn't housed. Not surprising. For Crescencia, a grandmother who had also been in a shared housing situation, was no longer able to keep that, had come to us for shelter, and we provided her some interim housing assistance through Motel, but also are trying to help negotiate for her the ability to be able to go back and stay with some of her family and friends. So, some of the things we talked about earlier today. Just because of time, I better quickly move on. I just want to say, we really appreciate the opportunity to have been part of the learning process with HSA around homeless redesign, and we really look forward to being an integral part of the design and implementation of this new plan. I do want to say to the board that I think in all of what was presented today, it is important to realize that we will need more resources. This process is going to require realigning of resources that we currently have, and certainly, I think there's a commitment to doing that. But as I've been through this process, it's been clear that we're also, can I finish?
Talk fast.
Okay. Need more resources. That includes, of course, the Affordable Housing Office, but also the staff resources, because especially do what we're talking about, it takes time to listen and to be creative of how we can provide solutions for helping people to get rehoused. So, that's really, really important. And then, the other part is that I think it's clear that we're starting new things, homeless diversion, rapid rehousing, but also the interim housing part, which is what our emergency shelter currently is. We're talking about redesigning it and fitting it, right sizing it is what the term is. But in right sizing, it might mean that we end up with less beds, but it may also, it's going to mean that the people who are going to be needing those shelter beds are the ones who are the, need the most intensive support. So, staff ratios might be different, the level of qualifications for the staff at those shelters might be different. So, even then, as we're refitting and redesigning, we need to realize that for our shelter system, there's still going to be very important investment in those resources to make sure that that right fitting is what we need. So, sorry, you're giving me the look.
Thank you, Terry. Pastor Baines.
The look.
Yeah.
She's not even officially a preacher. But she's preaching to President Slocum and the whole board and manager of Malte and Baines. Thank you for this opportunity. I was wondering if I could really add value. Terry actually said a lot of what I was going to bring up. I do want to say thank you for your support through Measure A on how you've helped so many of the CBOs out there. And particularly, you have a dedicated staff, because it was concerns of ours when you, when the transition of certain people left from the head of HSA all the way down to, you know, oh my goodness, a middle-aged moment, the, what's the guy's name that left? He's a veteran. Anyway, it'll come to me later. No, not him. Oh, man. But anyway, Jessica, she's dedicated, I mean, 8:30, 6:30 in the morning, I'm getting emails. 8:30 at night, I'm getting emails from her, and it could be the same day. She's very dedicated and committed, and so, we're just very pleasantly glad that she's a part of the team. She's taken Wendy's place and, and really has taken it up a notch. Something I said to you all maybe a year ago was that, you know, in my, from my faith tradition, God's not making any more land. And to me, no land, no landing. And so, if, if the emphasis, can we, if we can go down parallel tracks of also why we're working on the strategic plan, which I support the strategic plan, we spent a lot of time with it. But if we can look at the land that the county owns, the land that the city owns, and then the high-tech people who have caused part of the problem of the rents being so high and above reach, and work with the CBOs, if we can go down that parallel tracks of working with them to say, are you willing to invest? Facebook is doing some stuff in Menlo Park, working with the city now. And I think if we can create more of those types of partnerships where Facebook can get its employees and theirs, but the communities also can get the, the community people in there. And I think it was New York that had passed some law that anyone that lives in the community, when people are coming from the outside, 40% of that building gets, the people in the community gets first choice of it. And that's been in New York, in the Bronx. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Baines. Mr. Fox, is there anything new on this, or?
Yes. Thank you, and the Human Service Agency for recognizing that there is treatment and housing resistance in the individuals who are in the homeless population. But I especially want to thank you for recognizing that parents are the true first responders and a potential housing resource that's not reflected in the plan, and I think it should be. Because Supervisor Horsley gave the perfect example of parents providing housing for, for adult children who need help. And that is a housing resource that I think is a very quick, easy, and cheap alternative to dealing with some segment of this homelessness. And I think that is a segment that we should be looking at, the most difficult cases. My experience is that if you deal with the most difficult cases first, everything else seems to work out just fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Helen Zimmerman? And that's it for that. Sorry.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I just want to say very, very, very briefly, to follow Supervisor Pine, with regards to the treatment-resistant, that many of those are the individuals who have mental illness, and that we make sure that if there are special circumstances that we can help to get them housing, they will be able to rehabilitate that much more easily. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll, we'll move to our 9:30 item, which is a study session to receive information regarding affordable housing, residential impact fee, and commercial linkage fee, and provide guidance. Ms. Jensen.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malte and Mr. Byers. My name is Peggy Jensen. I'm deputy county manager. We are here today to bring back one of the 29 items that your board identified and asked staff to research as part of your affordable housing initiative. Although we did not plan it this way with the Human Service Agency, it seems quite appropriate that we're bringing forward an item you asked us to look into that could potentially fund many of the topics, many of the projects that you've been talking about this morning, such as micro homes and other affordable housing projects. Our presentation today is going to include three parts. First, we're going to open with an overview of the legal aspects associated with impact fees. Chief Deputy County Counsel John Niblin will be joined by Deputy County Counsel Tim Fox and Rebecca Horton to do that presentation. After that legal presentation, we're going to have Josh Abrams present to you the county-wide approach to impact fees. Mr. Abrams is a consultant with Baird &amp; Driscoll, and they are the support staff or the consultants who provide support to the 21 Elements Project. And then, finally, we'll give some from the planning department, with support from Heather Peters from the Department of Housing, will outline some options for your board to consider in terms of next steps that could be taken. After we conclude our presentation, we await direction from you for the next steps you would like us to take. So, with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Niblin.
Thank you, Peggy. Good morning, President Slocum, Honorable Board. I'm Mr. Malte. I'm Mr. Byers. See if I can. So, as Peggy was saying, we're going to start with just sort of a little bit of context setting, talking a little bit about definitions and some legal context. And it seems like the right place to start, then, is when we're talking about impact fees today, what do we mean definitionally? And what we're talking about is a fee that could be charged to developers of, certain residential or commercial development projects to mitigate impacts that such development would, would cause on the need for affordable housing within the, within the county. So, these are authorized under California law, the Mitigation Fee Act and other sources of authority and law in California, not especially novel, the context of developer fees in particular. And in fact, some agencies within the region have already adopted ordinances that impose affordable housing impact fees. Different from inclusionary housing, as you know, we've already gotten inclusionary housing ordinance, and in fact, in the near future, we'll be bringing back our inclusionary housing ordinance to do some tweaking to address some legal changes that exist out there. These are, inclusionary housing ordinances require developers of certain new market-rate housing to develop, at least owner-occupied market-rate housing, to dedicate a certain percentage of those units as affordable housing for very low-income, low-income, or moderate- percentage of those units as affordable housing for very low-income, low-income, or moderate-income individuals. There is an interplay between inclusionary housing and what we're presenting to you today, and that's affordable housing impact fees. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we roll on. As I was noting, impact fees, not a novel concept per se in California. We, in fact, here in the county even, have impact fees already that we impose on roads, stormwater, parks, fire, schools. We don't -- actually, it's not the county as an agency that imposes every one of those fees. For example, the school impact fees are actually imposed by school districts. But again, there's a very sound precedent for this that exists. So in terms of the legal framework, at a high level, in order to impose an impact fee, you've got to establish a reasonable relationship between the fee that you're proposing to impose and the deleterious impact that the fee is intended to mitigate. And again, that's kind of straight out of the government code there. The way that you establish that reasonable relationship is through a nexus study. So we'll have a lot of conversation today about nexus studies. My colleague Rebecca Horton, my newest colleague, actually, pleased to have her here with us today presenting, is going to provide a bit of a bird's eye view of the ways that nexus studies support the imposition of impact fees, and she'll talk a little bit as well about the particular two nexus studies we'll be considering today. We have a nexus study that you'll -- that we'll talk about that looks at the nexus between the development of market-rate housing and the need for affordable housing. And then as well, a nexus study that looks at certain forms of commercial development and the need for market-rate housing. And again, Rebecca will talk at a high level about that. And then Josh Abrams will drill down and get into sort of the guts of the nexus studies and what they mean for us and what kinds of decisions they create for you to consider. So without further ado, then, I'll have my colleague Rebecca talk a little further about this.
Good morning. So as John mentioned, I'll be covering the bird's eye view, about 30,000 feet up view of the impact fee basics. So what the slide shows is the progress of how the fees flow, how we get from that initial nexus study to the result, which is building new affordable housing. Now, as John mentioned, the nexus study serves as the basis of the impact fee that will be imposed. It establishes the meets and the bounds of that impact fee. From there, there's a resulting ordinance, and the ordinance imposes a specific fee. Now, that fee is imposed on market-rate development. That market-rate development then pays the fees that will then go into a fund, an account dedicated to affordable housing. And then from that account, the monies will be withdrawn to then build the affordable housing. Now, that market-rate development piece actually has two components. As John talked about, it's market-rate housing and then new market-rate housing and new commercial development. Now, nexus studies, as John also mentioned, are not -- nexus studies establish the basis, are the foundation for the impact fee imposed. Now, a nexus study is specific to that impact fee. And here, we're talking about two types, market-rate housing and commercial housing, or commercial development. So the next two slides will actually detail the reasonable relationship we have to show between the activity that the fee is being imposed upon, so either market-rate housing or commercial development, and then the problem, the new -- the need for affordable housing that the fees will then be applied to. So this next slide is intended to show the nexus, that relationship between new market-rate housing, residential housing, and then the need for affordable housing. So you start with new market-rate homes. This leads to new jobs, some of which are low-wage jobs. But what's the negative impact of this new market-rate homes? What's the problem? The negative impact is that some of these jobs, the wage is around $1,700 a month, but the average cost of rent is hovering around $2,400. So therefore, this creates the need for affordable housing. And as you can see, the slide is then showing that nexus, that relationship between the activity, market-rate homes, and then the problem the fee is going to apply to, which is the need for affordable housing and the building of affordable homes. This next slide is then establishing the nexus, that relationship between new commercial development and the need for affordable housing. So we have new commercial developments, and borrowing from the previous slide, new development in the area is going to bring in new restaurants, new coffee shops, new retailers. Some of those jobs will be low-wage, and as a result, they can't afford market-rate housing. There's a need for affordable housing. Further, new commercial development brings in new businesses. It brings in new people and jobs to the area, and those people are looking to live in the area as well. Some of those jobs will not pay wages that are sufficient to afford market-rate housing. So as a result, those factors converge into that need for affordable housing. Now, I'm going to introduce Josh Abrams. He's a consultant with Baird &amp; Driscoll, and he will be able to get into the more of the details of that nexus study.
Great. Thank you very much. Again, I'm Josh Abrams, and I've worked with 21 Elements since its inception about eight years ago. And this is a countywide collaboration of all the cities. It's supported by the Department of Housing and the City and County Association of Governments and the county. All of the cities participate, and all the cities help fund it. 21 Elements seems to provide housing resources, information, best practices, help with planning for cities throughout the county. We've helped with both collaboration, helping them work from each other, learn from each other, helping the public be involved in housing discussions. It's a context of regional collaboration, but it's always local control. So we'll follow the cities, we'll support the cities' interests, but we won't support, we won't push jurisdictions to make policy. We'll just present resources for them. It started by -- 21 Elements started by talking about housing planning, but we're always looking for opportunities where cities have a shared interest in implementation. And that's where the nexus study and the impact fees came in. Because cities lost both redevelopment agency funding and the authority to do inclusionary housing or require affordable units on some rental property, there was a lot of interest in a bunch of different cities in having impact fees or exploring those impact fees. So what we did, and 21 Elements won an American Planning Association Best Practice Award. So what we did to support the interest of impact fees is we had all the cities that were interested pool their money and jointly hire one consultant, Strategic Economics, to write reports for each city. I think an important thing is although all the cities pooled their money to jointly hire one consultant, each city, each jurisdiction got their own report. So the one for the county says is about unincorporated county, the one for Redwood City is about Redwood City, where there's opportunity to learn from each other and do better outreach because of the larger effort, because of all the cities participating. That's a bonus. But wherever it's possible to tie it to local rents or local information, that local data was used. All the cities that were participating, most of the cities got both a residential and a commercial study, so that'll justify fees if cities or jurisdictions are interested in one or the other, and various prototypes within those different types of developments within those broader categories. One of the important points with the different prototypes, there's a lot of variation within them, office or retail. There's a lot of things that can be subtle in one or the other. The final ordinance will specify exactly what's what. The point of the nexus study, it's really about essential connection or rough proportionality. It's not looking to get down to how is a used car lot going to have different impacts. That's too fine a detail, it's kind of on a bigger picture level. What are the impacts? What are the connections? The study both looked at the nexus, which is the legal fee, the most you're allowed to support, and it conducted a separate feasibility analysis, which provided recommendations about what fees are more appropriate for each jurisdiction. And wherever possible, we use conservative estimates, so although the maximum fee supported might be lower, otherwise, it'll be more legally defensible. So these are a very small list of all the participating cities, but almost all the cities that in the county are participating. A couple of small towns that don't really get much growth aren't, and it makes sense probably for them not to participate. All the other ones have either done their own study or are participating in the 21 Elements study. So of the 700,000 people in the county, all but 20-some-thousand are in jurisdictions that are participating. So it's basically 97% are in jurisdictions that either have impact fees or did their own study or are participating in the 21 Elements study. These are some of the fast-moving cities. Each city's in its own place. The reports have only been out pretty briefly. Redwood City was the first to adopt. Foster City and San Mateo City have both held hearings. Belmont also has held hearings. East Palo Alto probably should be on this list. They're considering their direction to staff was to move forward with a commercial impact fee. Menlo Park also is moving forward, considering a commercial fee. In Belmont, staff's preparing the ordinance. In San Mateo, it's preparing the ordinance. So there's a lot of movement each week, each month. A couple of other cities will join the list of who has fees. A real quick summary of what the fees, the maximum fees are. You can see the maximum fees that the consultants came up with are tend to be pretty high, in the $40 for single-family or $30 for condos. That's, again, the most you're allowed to charge. And then the consultants also came up with their recommendations. These aren't staff recommendations. This is just the economic consultant's recommendation, so it's just another data point. But we're focusing more on the per-square-foot charge, so you can see what the consultants recommended was 35 to 40 for a single-family home detached, and on down to 5 to 10 for apartments. Similarly, for commercial studies, the fees, the maximum possible fees are very high, but that's not recommended fees. It's not, no city would adopt a fee at that level. The recommended fees are, tend to be 10 to 25 for hotels, 5 to 10 for restaurants and retail, and 25 to 40 for office, medical, R&amp;D. This list is something that can be constantly updated. It's really every couple of weeks, another city is at least considering it, but it gives you a sense of what some of the neighboring jurisdictions are considering. Typically, in San Mateo or Santa Clara County, a lot of the impact fees are around $20 per square foot, both for residential and for office. Retail fees tend to be, tend to be a little lower. And as I was saying, Menlo Park and East Palo Alto, there's a number of cities that are in the process of updating these more. Okay. And with that, I'm going to turn it over.
I'm Tim Fox, Deputy County Counsel, and I'm here to talk for a moment about a mechanical issue in the way in which these fees are to be adopted and imposed. As Ms. Horton and Mr. Niblin said moments ago, there are rules that govern the adoption of these fees, and so we have very particular ways of implementing them at the county level. It's going to come in two halves when we come to you with a proposal at a future session, if so directed. And we've looked at neighboring jurisdictions and tried to determine best practices for imposition of these fees, and we've determined that one very elegant solution is to break the adoption into two pieces. Each of the fees, both the residential fee and the commercial fee, can be in a single ordinance, but we do it in sort of two separate components. The first half is an ordinance, and the ordinance will do several things. First, it will state the purpose for which the fee is being imposed. Now, as a board supervisor, you frequently adopt ordinances and resolutions that have many whereas clauses that explain what it is that you're trying to undertake and why. And in most cases, that's simply to inform the public about your reasoning so that the public has a better understanding about why the county is doing what it's doing. It has the secondary effect, beneficial effect, for our office of helping us interpret the ordinance on behalf of staff, and in the event of a need for a court to interpret the meaning of an ordinance, we look to the legislative history and the purposes for which the ordinance was adopted. So it will have that impact as well. But most importantly, in this particular context, because impact fees have to be supported by a nexus study, and the fees have to be tailored to address a cause-and-effect relationship that's been established by that nexus study, it's extremely important that we state the purposes of the fee in a very particular way so that both the public and perhaps later a court can understand full well what it is that the fee is being imposed on and why it is being imposed. The second thing that the ordinance will do is actually establish the program itself. And there are several ways to do this, and we're looking at how the mechanics of that will work. One opportunity is to simply state that no permits for various kinds of projects shall issue by any county department unless the fee has been paid. The ordinance will determine a time and a manner of payment. You've got a couple of options for doing that, and we're working on language to propose at a future session, if so directed. Some jurisdictions impose the fee at an early stage of the project. Others choose to ask that the fee be paid at a much later stage in the project, and that's an opportunity and an option that the board can discuss and be presented with by staff recommendation at a later point. Another thing that the ordinance itself can do is describe whether any project applicants have alternatives to paying the fee. In some instances, jurisdictions give the option to a project applicant to do things other than payment of the fee, such as build onsite housing for their workforce or onsite affordable units that might be triggered by another ordinance. So that's something that's provided for in many ordinances imposing these fees. And finally, what the ordinance will do is it will describe either generally or more specifically, a use for the funds. In most jurisdictions, they simply say, there shall be an affordable housing fund. We might have different nomenclature for that because we have other funds that have designated purposes. But we need to sequester the funds that are generated by this fee, because if we don't sequester those funds and limit their use to the provision of affordable housing, we call into question whether or not the nexus study really supports the imposition of the fee. So the fee can't go into the general fund and fund other things of benefit to the citizens of the county. It has to be earmarked for affordable housing in some way, shape, or form. And the board may have an interest in the ordinance in actually specifying the manner in which those funds may be dispersed. Particular opportunities, establishing a program for application for grant funding, or even earmarking the funds in partnership with another institution such as Heart that might be available to receive the funds and implement them in a way that benefits the county's policies. So that's the first half, the ordinance. The second half is a resolution, and the resolution will do things in support of the ordinance. The first is it will set the fee rates, and that is a policy question for your board to consider, probably the biggest policy issue other than whether or not to impose a commercial or residential impact fee, would be the rates that are going to be charged. And we'll have other slides to talk about that particular issue. And then another thing that the resolution component of the adoption might do is provide for exemption of certain kinds or categories of projects from payment of any of the fees at all. And several neighboring jurisdictions in doing their adoptions did it in this format, where they had the ordinance that established the fee, and then a resolution that both set the rates and then described categorically the types of projects that wouldn't need to pay them for various reasons. So I'm now going to hand over the baton to Will Gibson from the Department of Building and Planning to talk about some of the policy issues and opportunities.
Thank you, Tim. Good morning, supervisors. So as Tim noted, I'm going to talk through some of the policy considerations that go into the nuances of how the ordinance might work and the types of development that might be subject to the impact fee. We've heard quite a bit about the general idea of the impact fee, how the ordinance would be structured, and the nexus study itself, which supports the legal basis for this. But there are a number of decisions that the board can make which would change how this applies in practice, and I'm just going to briefly go through the main components of those decisions. First, the question of which types of development should be subject to the impact fee and which types should not be subject to the impact fee. What you see on this slide here are the major categories of development as we've broken them down. And in some cases, we have done some very specific analysis, and staff has recommendations that should we be directed to go forward with this process, we would make to the board. In some cases, these are offered more as concepts that we would refine as we moved forward. So in the category of new for-sale attached multifamily residential units, for projects of five or more units, these are already subject to our inclusionary housing ordinance, and our recommendation would be that these continue to be subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance, continue to provide units onsite, and thereby be exempt from the impact fee because they are directly addressing the impact which we are trying to mitigate through this program. For projects of less than five units, these are not subject to our inclusionary housing ordinance, and staff's recommendation would be that, in this case, they are subject to the impact fee. For the second category shown here, new for-sale single-family detached residential, typical single-family homes. For projects of five or more units, we do recommend that these be included in the impact fee. For less than five units, we also do recommend that they should be included in the impact fee. And let me just note, because I did not initially, other cities have also And let me just note, because I did not initially, other cities have also explored which, which development types obviously should be included and not included. These are shown in the far column. For less than five units, we also feel that these should be included, but with some exemptions potentially based around the size of the units. For new rental residential, we believe that all projects should be subject to the inclusionary, to the impact fee as these are exempt now from our inclusionary ordinance. And for commercial development, we also feel that these should be subject to the impact fee. But potentially, there is some rationale for exempting very small commercial projects. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So that captures the basic categories of development that would be covered by the impact fee. Within those categories of development, there are a certain number of types of projects that could be exempted at the board's discretion. And these are shown here with staff's recommendation to the extent that we have them. So for projects that are willing to or are required to provide affordable housing units onsite as part of their project, we recommend that, in every case, these be exempt from the impact fee ordinance as they are directly addressing the impact that we're trying to mitigate in this case. For low-income housing, similarly, low-income housing directly addresses the need for low-income housing and should be exempted. Second units are also typically cheaper than primary units. And this is also a development type that the board has expressed great interest in incentivizing. So staff recommends that these should be exempted from whatever impact fee the board decides to craft if it does decide to proceed. Small square-foot commercial projects, as I noted, there's some rationale for trying to incentivize small business by exempting these smaller projects. However, staff has not come up with any size threshold that we feel is appropriate. So if directed, we would come back with further information on that type of exemption. For smaller, single-family, for-sale, detached homes, particularly in subdivision projects that are, that are fairly small, five units or smaller, we believe that something around the lines of the first thousand square feet of livable space might be exempted from the fee, which would incentivize smaller development prototypes. But anything beyond that should be subject to the fee, as in the case of larger projects. And in addition, full tear-down and rebuild or remodel of existing space, whether that is residential space or commercial space, we believe it's logical to exempt those from the fee as well as modest residential expansions of 1,000 feet, square feet or less. So that summarizes, in very capsule form, the types of development that, that you could subject to the fee and that you could exempt from the fee. At this point, I'd like to just bring back some of the information that Josh went over on the fee levels and the information from the NEXUS study. As you can see here, this shows for residential projects, the county legal maximum, the NEXUS study recommendation of fee range, and then in the left-hand column, what other cities in San Mateo have adopted. And as you can see, in every case, the recommended range from the NEXUS study is significantly lower. And I'll show commercial development in just a moment as well. The recommended NEXUS study recommendation range is significantly, for the most part, lower than the legal maximum that the NEXUS study would support imposing. And it's also fairly similar to the levels that other jurisdictions are imposing. Staff does not have a specific recommendation about where the impact fee level precisely should fall for different development types. But we will be doing, we are doing that analysis, and we will have recommendations should the board direct us to move forward very shortly. And we'll be basing it on the ranges that you see here in the NEXUS study. And the commercial is shown here, very similarly, much lower than the county legal maximum and very similar to what the cities are adopting. Now, these don't recommend, these don't represent a specific recommendation, but what they do provide the basis for is to determine what ranges of fee revenue might be collected should we impose a fee in the county. And to that end, I'd like to bring Josh Abens back just briefly to talk about that issue.
One of the most common questions we get is how much revenue can be raised from fees. So we put together some real quick estimates about the fees. We will have that in a second. There we go. So we just looked at some assumptions, which are about 50 units per year in the unincorporated county. Some of those would be ownership, so assuming that the inclusionary ordinance continues to apply to those, some of those wouldn't pay the fee. And then there's maybe about 2,000 square feet of commercial development per year in the unincorporated county. So using those assumptions, we just looked at what it would be for 10 and, for $10 and $25 per square foot. That ends up being about between half a million and $1.2 million in revenue. But I actually think the most important role for the county is to set direction for the county and not to force any jurisdictions, but just to set a context for other cities because the real, where the, there's the most potential for, for new housing and new affordable housing is if a bunch of cities participate. So I also looked at the potential revenue countywide, if all the cities adopted it. I based it on a San Francisco Business Times article that talked about the development that was proposed in, in, in construction or approved throughout the county. And what you can see is there's a lot, these are proposed developments right now, so pipeline developments. 8,000 residential units were, are proposed, 15 million square feet of office and a half million square feet of, of retail. So because we're in a good, healthy economic real estate cycle, if you look at those and just kind of look at what the typical fees are per jurisdiction for the, for the ones that adopted now, about $20,000 per unit for residential units, $20 per square foot for office, and $5 per square feet. Oh, and a number of hotel rooms also, 1,700 hotel rooms. You get about $100 million per year is possible countywide.
Over what time range?
Per year, during a good, a good economic cycle. So if you actually looked at all of those projected developments, it would be almost $500 million. But that's going to be spread out over five years or something like that. So, and also, if you looked at construction that's, that's been approved, this is just proposed now, but if you look back at things that are under construction or approved, it also would be somewhere in that $100 million per year revenue range. Again, that's really dependent on the revenue, on the, on the real estate cycle, if it's assuming a good years continue. But that's kind of a real rough estimate of countywide. Some of those, and I'm not trying to say that's how much it would be because some of those residential units would be, they would be ownership units and they would pay an impact fee. They would do inclusionary units, and some of the cities won't adopt it. But just to give you a sense of the amount of construction happening in the county and what it would look like based on typical fees. So that's, that's the estimate, both the unincorporated county and countywide.
So Josh provided some, some very valuable information on how much revenue might be collected, obviously both countywide and in the unincorporated county, which brings up the question of how to collect and segregate those funds for the unincorporated county. And essentially, there are, there are two basic choices for that. One of them is to create a new segregated, discrete county trust fund, which would collect those monies, and as, as Tim referenced as well, and then would pay them out to affordable projects in the unincorporated county. The second choice, and so county funds only, and the funds go directly to, to projects in our jurisdiction. The other option is to contribute to an existing housing trust fund, such as the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, or HART. And in that case, county funds would be aggregated with the contributions of other jurisdictions. And the potential advantage of that is that it leverages other funds for potentially greater impact of all the funds collectively. I believe county council is still working out the legal details, the legal ramifications of that second strategy. But it may be that it's at the board's discretion to choose either of those options to use the funds collected should we impose an impact fee. With that, I just would like to, before we conclude, recap the main decision points and discussion topics on impact fees as we have presented them today. The first major question, obviously, is should the county proceed with crafting and adopting an impact fee ordinance? The second question is, what types of development should be covered by that impact fee? Residential, commercial, rental, for-sale, single-family, multifamily, and the, the range of options that we described earlier? And the types of exemptions that should be allowed? Obviously, the important question of the appropriate fees for development. And finally, how to allocate funds in our own discrete fund or combining with a fund that may already exist? With that, that concludes our presentation for today, and we would be happy to answer any questions the Supervisors may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Questions from the board, Supervisor Tissier.
Just, don't go away, don't go away. We might want to bring up with your legal counsel with you. On that part on this, where you put the funds, you talked about you could have a segregated county fund, or we could do an existing multi-jurisdictional housing trust fund. Could we actually do a combination thereof where you have it segregated, but the board would have the discretion at any time if they wanted to put money towards HART from a legal perspective instead of having either/or?
Yes, I think, could it develop a hybrid process like that? The analysis we've done so far, I mean, you could go one or the other. And certainly, a mix of that would be legally defensible as well, we believe.
I just think there's, there's obviously a lot of options throughout the county and a lot of the cities that might have more land than we have or more buildable land than we would. And I wouldn't want to keep us from, from being able to do that.
Correct. Yeah, I, again, we believe that, you know, a hybrid approach like is suggested would be equally defensible, you know, with respect to the other two options.
Has anyone allocated monies to HART or another third party?
From an impact fee, no, not that I'm aware of. I don't believe that's happened.
Supervisor Horstley.
Well, I think, you know, this is sort of at the beginning because we just started this 21 elements. And so cities are starting to do this. And, you know, one of the advantages of contributing some portion of it to HART, in fact, what I was thinking about is essentially taking, say, half of, if, first of all, I like to, I would support imposing an impact fee. And one of the first things I think about is like, we have a hotel going in at the airport, and that would be one of the first places that we would see, I think, a substantial gain. In any case, what I would see is that we want to encourage other jurisdictions to collaborate with us. And HART is, is already created, so there's no need to create a new JPA. There's no need to create a new affordable housing fund. A lot of jurisdictions, if they also impose impact fees, probably are not going to have enough money to actually do a project. So if we could get them, encourage them to match us in terms of percentage-wise. So for example, if we started off with, say, 50% of our impact fees went to HART and asked other cities to do the same, we could end up, hopefully, providing some leadership to the county, providing a vehicle for smaller cities. You know, maybe San Mateo doesn't need it as much, but, you know, it might be a vehicle that's, that encourages other cities to actually put money into that pool so that we could actually support affordable housing. One of the other things that I, you know, that's, some of the cities, in fact, when doing that with Supervisor Slocum and I on this job housing, job gaps, housing task force, we found out that some of the city council people thought that before they could support affordable housing, they had to have the entire pot of money. And so one of the things that they've learned is they, they don't. That, that by pooling money, there are other resources working together. So I'm in favor of proceeding with the impact fee ordinance. I'm also in favor of having some portion of it go to HART to encourage other jurisdictions to contribute as well.
Thanks, Supervisor. We understand your, your guidance. And I, I think we should caveat it. I mean, this is a relatively new area of, of the law. And we are, we're not aware of anybody who successfully challenged an allocation like we're talking about here to a regional fund where monies would be used outside of the geographical boundaries of the, of the agencies, recognizing in particular that we're dealing kind of a regional issue. We feel pretty confident of our ability to defend exactly what you're asking us to do. And in any event, though, we'll, we'll certainly move forward and analyze that. There are some mechanical things that we have to work out under the, the impact sort of fee law. The Mitigation Fee Act has certain reporting requirements that are made a little bit complicated by allocating monies to another agency. And we, not insurmountably complicated, but we do have to, we do have to drill down on those things.
Thank you. Supervisor Tissier.
Just a question on the chart here. We talked about other jurisdictions and square foot footage. And it gives, like, for instance, in San Carlos, for single-family detached, it gives a range from 24 to 44. How do they determine who's charged at 24 and who's charged at 44?
Do you remember? Different cities have various ways. Okay.
So this is the chart to which you are referring, or?
It's the one that shows all the cities, and then it gives the amounts. Keep going. See, where San Carlos says 24 to 44 for single-family detached, how do they determine whether they're going to charge them 20? Is it total discretionary based on?
No, I, you know, I don't know the answer to that offhand, but I suspect it depends on either the size of the home itself and scales up based on size or the size of the total subdivision project. In some cases, if it's a larger project where you're building 20 units or 30 single-family units, they tend to scale up. Some jurisdictions do it in that way. With the rationale that the impact is larger, the more homes you're, you're creating, but.
I think you're right that it's the size of the development. But in the original chart which we can get you, there's footnotes for each of these that explains the ranges.
What sort of strikes me, I mean, when I look at some of the other cities, the fees are what I would consider a lot more reasonable. And the only thing that concerns me is if you get your fees too high, you're now adding 100,000 on top of an already million-dollar house. At some point, even the market rate is, is, I mean, they're already exorbitant, and now we're just adding insult to injury. I understand the need for the impact fee. I'm all for that, within reason, because, you know, we're going to continue to market people out because we're never going to be able to do enough affordable housing for everyone we want to. So it just concerns me a little bit that I, whatever we do, I want it to be within reason so it really can get the affordable housing, but not continue to, you know, push people out of our county.
I had a question on the, one of the slides showing the fees in the other jurisdictions. And it looks like Menlo Park, you know, exempted all residential. In Mountain View, in Sunnyvale, exempted all residential except for, except for apartments, which must be because of the, the fact that you can't do the inclusionary zoning on apartments. So I don't know if somebody on team can talk about what those jurisdictions were thinking about because I do have some, I'm a little undecided on how to think about housing impact fees. So these jurisdictions decided to carve them out.
No, actually, I would think of it like they haven't moved forward with them yet. Haven't.
Oh, these are not adopted?
They haven't what?
No, so they haven't moved forward, they haven't adopted. So Menlo Park has had a longstanding commercial fee and a longstanding inclusionary ordinance. When the court struck down the inclusionary for rental, they joined the 21 Elements project to consider the impact fees for the rental side. So the inclusionary, so Menlo Park, instead of saying NA for ownership, for more context, you could say falls under inclusionary ordinance. And for the, for the rental units, you could say in process because they just got their report, they actually had asked for some customization in it. So they just got their report, so they'll be considering it. So I wouldn't read into, into the.
So you're saying these jurisdictions, Menlo Park, Mountain View, and Sunnyvale, they haven't, they're all considering these issues too? Okay, I just thought they had already made a decision.
That's right.
Okay.
Through the President, Mr. Byers and I, through great sleuthing, have determined that the San Carlos ordinance is based on the actual number of units. So the square-footage fee for one unit is much less than it would be for 80 units on a fee basis.
So a sliding scale.
Sliding scale.
Based on the development size.
Yeah, the development size. So you pay much more on a per-square-footage basis for a large number of units than you would for one single unit.
So I had a couple other things if I could finish. Yeah, so on the, on the housing impact side, so, you know, I see in the list of possible exemptions, you know, one of the recommendations is to exempt it if it's already covered by inclusionary zoning, which, which makes sense. But I guess kind of following up a little bit on Supervisor Tissier's point. In my mind, it's the commercial growth that has caused the housing crisis. You know, it's the 20 million square feet of new commercial. And, and so when someone is building housing, you know, all housing is good housing. And they're responding to a demand created by, you know, they're not building housing because there's, there's no demand for it. It's because of this big commercial, commercial boom. So, you know, I, I just wonder whether, I would like, I think we maybe need to do a lighter touch on the housing because I don't really see them as the ones that caused the problem. And they're helping to solve the problem by building the housing, you know. So I don't know where the balance is there. On the other hand, if you do a tear-down, you know, you're not creating a new house. You know, along those lines, I don't know if Supervisor Slocum or Horstley bounced, bounced the idea of Atherton, Hillsborough, Woodside, and Potola Valley, who will never build anything, you know. When they build, have a tear-down, I guess they're not offering to pay a fee to this new pool.
Well, we might suggest that they do.
Yeah, that'd be interesting, and it's a good discussion.
And that's actually one of the reasons for. And that's actually one of the reasons for looking at pooling, because some of those cities probably, you know, they're probably not going to, what they might do is they might do like a...
Secondary units.
Yeah, secondary units, that might be, but they probably are not going to build some of this housing, so it might make sense for them to pool. And I, you know, I guess there's a legal question that we still have to look at, is if, if you have an impact fee, and could you pool it with another agency? And actually, so I look at San Mateo County as a single entity, even though we do have different jurisdictions, but if, if somebody builds a huge warehouse, say, in Daly City, it's going to have impact on, you know, property all the way down the peninsula, or if they, the other way around, if it's in Redwood City or East Palo Alto, and it's a huge Facebook, for example, is having major impact in housing in the whole area. So why could we not share? But I think that's a legal question we have to clarify.
Correct, and we, recognizing, again, there isn't any reported case on that particular subject, we, I think we, you know, certainly county council do see it the way you're describing, which is that we're dealing with a regional issue, and it's sort of artificial to think of, you know, housing built, you know, on the unincorporated, you know, part of Redwood City versus Redwood City proper as not being appropriate mitigation when you're looking at affordable housing.
Thank you. Supervisor Grum?
Have there been studies done on other communities that have imposed these fees of whether there is a speed-up in development, or a slowdown, or is there a five- or 10-year look at what's actually happened?
Yeah, there's been a number of studies, and in this way, inclusion, the inclusionary housing ordinance is also functioning the same way. It feels like an impact fee to the developers, an extra cost they have to pay. What the economic research shows really clearly is that the, it's, you can't just pass those prices along, because the market determines how much the product will sell for in the end. Where you really see the most dramatic effect on, if a city adds a new impact fee, an affordable housing impact fee, is the price of developable land will go down, because developers will pay less for developable land, because they know that their costs, their costs are going to be higher, so they're going to have less money to pay for developable land. But what you do see is if the impact fees are too high, there is the potential that developers just won't build, so that's why it's important to adopt a reasonable fee and follow the feasibility guidance.
And how do you, how do you view communities such as ours, where land is nonexistent, or at high premium, or, you know, has that been incorporated into any studies?
Right, well, so, one of the studies looked at what happened when inclusionary housing ordinances went away because of the Palmer decision that eliminated them, and you didn't see, so you have two case studies. You have cities that never had inclusionary ordinance, nothing changed, and cities that had inclusionary ordinances where the fee went away, you didn't see that jump, you didn't see them acting differently. So, yeah, in cities like San Mateo County or unincorporated county, the economics are the same, but I do think, because here you're competing against underutilized land, it is really important to make sure the fees are, you're not pushing the fees to the very maximum, because then the developers won't be able to buy that land and do new housing.
Can you, Ms. Johnson or Mr. Niblin, can you get us some summaries of some of those studies so we can kind of look at them?
Certainly. We'll work with Mr. Abrams and his team to put together a packet of information for the board.
Thank you.
You know, on that point, you know, it would seem there'd be a higher tolerance for the fees with commercial than for housing, probably.
I think, too.
So, you know, if I, again, my bias is more there, less on the housing. I had, if I may, one other thing, too. You know, I was, I noticed that in Redwood City, and I think San Mateo, there was also some discussion of how to think about the prevailing wage, you know, in connection with new development, and I think in those cities, I don't know if they've adopted this yet, but they're considering including a provision that if the development is done with prevailing wage, then the impact fee is reduced by some amount.
Maybe I can take a quick crack at that, because I was talking to Mr. Nack just prior to, at the break, and he mentioned that Red City adopted such a, such a resolution, and so I took a quick look at the resolution. In fact, there is a kind of construct in place where if you, as a developer, residential or commercial, develop your project, and you agree to pay prevailing wages for your workers, that you get a 25%, I believe it's 25% reduction in your impact fee. So it's sort of a split fee. Agree to use, you know, work, pay prevailing wage, you pay a lesser impact fee. I think the idea being that you're, you know, by paying higher wages, you're, you're helping the affordable housing problem, so, I don't know if Mr. Nack may be addressing that today.
Other comments by, by members of the board?
Let me just say a couple of things, if I could. I'd like to start with a question, if I could, I don't know to whom to direct it to, but one of the charts said that estimated that the county would collect $1 million or thereabouts if we proceed with an ordinance.
On an annual basis, we looked at just the last two years of development, and we haven't had, compared to some other cities, we just have, we don't have necessarily the high levels of development. We think that'll be changing. There are definitely pressures on some of the undeveloped land, but, so we only took two years, and we projected it forward on that basis as a conservative estimate, and that's making estimates about what fee would be adopted as well, which are also fairly conservative. So it's very rough, but if you take the last few years and you look at what's been happening, project that forward for the next few years, that's where that number comes from.
Thank you. And I was just curious if anybody did an analysis on what the cost of the county would be to administer this? In other words, we collect a million, but we spend X. What, what is that number? Does anybody have that?
I think the honest answer is we have not analyzed that as yet.
Okay. Thank you. Eric, I am in support of Supervisor Horsley's idea with the split of the money between the county and Hart. I think, right now, I have concerns that have been expressed by Supervisor Pine and others about the residential portion of this, and, you know, being a former recorder in a previous life, you know, the cost of, the potential cost of ownership that gets, you know, absorbed by somebody, and so I have concerns about the residential portion. I am, you know, right now at least, in favor of exploring the residential part, I mean, the commercial part of all this, sorry. But it seems like the five questions that you asked, should we proceed, types and sizes, exemption fees, and allocation of funds, it seems like there are a lot of questions there that we're not going to get to today.
Yeah.
And perhaps, without objection, or maybe with objection, that since Supervisor Horsley and I represent the county on the Closing the Jobs Housing Task Force, that we form a subcommittee of the board that would include the supervisor and myself, perhaps, unless somebody else wants to jump in, to work with staff on this matter, and then, you know, if, yeah, if we decide to bring it back, so be it, yeah. Without objection, if...
I think, I think that's a good idea, and I wonder whether, after you finish your work, maybe you can come back to the board before we kind of go to drafting the statute, because there are a lot of moving parts here. So in other words, yeah, go think hard about it, but don't have these guys write the statute right away.
It's always good to have something in your hands that you can shoot at rather than have, yeah, no, I don't mean to, facetiously, I mean, you can have something to work with and mold it the way you want it, once you see something in hand, so I think that's a great idea.
Come back with that outline of what I've...
So will that be at the next meeting? There's no rush, though.
Maybe. We are fast workers.
So we'll establish that subcommittee. Mr. Byers?
Yeah, I might suggest you go ahead and make a, make a motion to create an ad hoc subcommittee of the board for that purpose right now.
I'll make that motion to have an ad hoc committee of the board, of both myself and Supervisor Slocum.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody's opposed. We do have two speaker cards on this item, if, if we could move to that. The first is Mark Leach, followed by Evelyn Stivers.
I made some corrections here. Now it says good afternoon. Thanks for allowing us to speak. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors. I wear a lot of hats, housing, veterans, and labor, and today I'm here on behalf of the Building Trades Council, here to talk about impact fees, and in fact, some of the, in the presentation, we saw alternatives and exemptions, and Supervisor Pine has already brought it up. Generally, any added cost to construction will negatively trickle down to the workers that build those projects. Having said that, we do understand the critical need for additional affordable housing in this county. We also understand there's not one answer that's going to resolve the issue, but there's some pretty good ideas. On December 7th, and this was what we were referring to on the other side of the room, the resolution that was passed in Redwood City, and we made copies, so if you guys want to produce the good old-fashioned paper kind, these, the resolution was to reduce impact fees by 25% for developers that commit to paying area standard wages to the construction workers on those projects. We recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt this two-tier type of system. This two-tier fee will reward the developers who recognize the importance of paying workers wages that enable them to live and work, and therefore pay taxes and contribute to the community of San Mateo County. This two-tier proposal will still let developers who do not want to participate do it the way they want to. Additionally, we recommend that all the revenue generated by these impact fees be used to actually construct affordable housing. By using the revenue for construction of new affordable units, San Mateo County will be helping to alleviate displacement of existing residents and enable all the new residents that would otherwise not afford to live in our county. And finally, by adding to the affordable housing stock, these new residents will no longer be commuting those long distances to work, and therefore, sorry, thereby reducing their contribution to greenhouse gases, and at the same time improving their quality of life and their families in construction, that's particularly important. Without paying the proper wages, too many construction workers are having to move. I already gave you the copies. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Evelyn?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and for your leadership on this issue. You know, we need three things to make affordable housing built, to build affordable housing. We need money, we need land, and we need political will. Having this kind of type of ongoing revenue source for the county could be a huge benefit, especially if we figure out ways to share revenue. So as communities, if they only have a small amount of money, but still have the political will and a site available, we can move forward with those developments, which could dramatically increase the amount of affordable housing we see built every year. So thank you so much for your leadership and direction on that. I just wanted to clarify one thing. I appreciate the board's concern about market-rate housing. Market-rate housing is extremely important for, we need more, more market-rate housing built. I live in market-rate housing, most people live in market-rate housing. The original concept behind impact fees, though, actually predates the Palmer decision. Sonoma County had a 40,000-square-foot house approved in the wine country, and they saw that as being a job generator. So that was the inspiration, so I, just don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. I know you are very smart, thoughtful people, and will think it through, but don't eliminate the ability to get fees on large, very expensive homes that do generate jobs in the county. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
I don't think we have to take any action. Mr. Byers, right?
No, that's correct. Yes, this is just a direction item.
Thank you.
Does the team feel like you've had enough direction to take to the next step?
I think that we're fine. We will, convene, our group will work with Supervisors Horsley and Slocum, and if you want to set a report back date, that's fine, or leave it open, that's fine, too.
All right, thank you. Let's just leave it open in terms of the report back date at this moment, and let's just meet, confer, and move on. So we'll move on now to item number seven. Housing Authority, Mr. Cole.
Good afternoon, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malby, Mr. Byers, and Sukamani. The board has convened now as the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the County of San Mateo, and I'm before you as the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. This is a largely administrative, yet important, moment, and it should go fairly quickly. We need to convene a public hearing and open and close that hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution for you to approve the Housing Authority's 2016-17 Moving to Work Annual Plan.
You caught me off guard there, Mr. Cole.
If you want to, open the public...
Open the hearing.
Yeah, is there a motion to open the public hearing? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Open the public hearing. Are any speakers in the audience? All I see are staff, so I'm assuming not.
So I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing closed.
Also make and adopt, adopt the resolution approving the Housing Authority's 2016-2017 Moving to Work Annual Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Yes. Any, no comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Cole, we've been working on the Moving to Work Act for a number of years, so don't feel that we're not paying attention.
Quite all right. Thank you.
Item number eight, Health System Resolution, approving the extra help hiring.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is required to be a regular item under the Pepper Law. Ms. Yonkers is retiring in March. She has been the primary person at the hospital that handles the physician credentialing, extremely important function, and in order to make that transition work, especially with the upcoming accreditation survey, we need to continue her on a part-time basis after her retirement. We'd recommend your approval.
I'll move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. County Manager, item number nine, Measure A Report.
Mr. President, members of the board, in your district, supervisory, District Four, Mr. Slocum, we're recommending a one-time $40,000 grant from your supervisory district funds to the City of East Palo Alto for the purpose of design, fabrication, installation of interpretive signage, and related elements at the Cooley Landing Education Center.
Thank you. I'll make a... Move approval. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a $300,000 grant, Measure A grant, to the City of Brisbane for library planning, I believe.
Mr. President, members of the board, this comes from District Five supervisory Measure A funds. It's a $30,000 grant, similar to what we've made in South San Francisco, for instance, to assist in the rebuilding of their library. They have raised funds, but they are still short, and we may be bringing back to the board at a later date a loan agreement, similar to what we have done with Halfman Bay, and perhaps Supervisor Tissier wishes to comment.
No, I just want to say it's a one-time $300,000. They just want to get it off the ground and get moving, and then hopefully we'll bring something back, as the county manager mentioned, as far as the law. So this is just a start, so...
You making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, been great for libraries, I'll tell you that.
Yes, it has been.
Yep.
Item number 11, County Managers' Report Number Six for 2016.
Mr. President, members of the board, do you have my report? If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Malby?
Mr. Malby, Supervisor Horsley and I have a question about public safety. The future of the Women's Correctional Center and adjacent work furlough program space remains the subject of ongoing discussions, and no recommendations have yet been made. Well, Supervisor Horsley and I have been working on this for about two years, and we now have architectural plans, and so I was a little disconcerted to see that no recommendations have yet been made, because I thought we were moving forward.
We are. That was made in the context that has not formally come to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Okay.
But you're absolutely right. The, the direction that we have and that we've been moving in is to convert that to a ongoing shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe, you just, so I understand, so I know we're doing all the upstreet on Maple Street, but there's, we have plans for this other spot, too?
Yes, there's two buildings there.
Right.
And by putting, by combining the buildings in that space, we are able to do, the architects believe that we are able to do a combination of transition, a little transitional housing, some shelter housing, some, some transition from jail to transit, to housing to out into the community, work with especially those veterans getting out of jail who have some mental health issues, who just don't have any place to go. So it's kind of a combination of the issues we've been talking about for the past few years, and we now have a site and some, and a building, and it's all very exciting.
No, it sounds great, but again, that's something different than the Maple Street expansion, what you just described.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah, there, it's on the existing old site where the women's facilities, in fact, there's already a small homeless shelter that operates on that site now, and has for, for a number of years.
We've been working very closely with Shelter Network and other providers.
And if, I'm sorry, if I could just add one con... And if, I'm sorry, if I could just add one comment, and that is, on that section of the report under Health and Human Services, CMS is looking at a variety of changes in Medicaid regulations that could have an extremely deleterious effect on county, county hospital financing in general. I just wanted to call that out to the board's attention. It's obviously under ongoing discussions, but it certainly affects both our FQHC and the loan program in which the county helps to fund the Medicaid program for the state of California, and gets reimbursed back through, through that mechanism.
No, that's, I appreciate that. I was just going to ask you to comment on that, because I think that, that could be a real problem, including for the Daly City Youth Health Center that we're looking to move. If they were to lose their FQHC dollars, that could be a real, real problem. And we serve over 3,000 youth in that program. So, you know, I guess the question I would ask on that one, is there anything we as a board can do, or send letters, or, I mean, I think this, this is really troubling. This could be huge dollars.
It is large. We're, right now, working very closely with the California Public Hospitals Association, who's really taken the lead in California on this. And at the appropriate points, points in time where the board can be helpful, we'll bring those items back, and maybe even request one or more board members go back to Washington, because this is obviously for all public hospitals in the, in the state of California, it's a very important issue.
Thank you, John.
Supervisor Pine, did you have another comment?
No.
No, okay. Okay, so we'll move on now to item number 12, which is a resolution supporting San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority's Measure for a Clean and Healthy Bay.
I know the hour is late.
Wait, Measure AA, June 7, 2016 ballot, sorry.
Okay. So the hour is late, and so I'm just going to skip ahead just to the end of this presentation. First off, I appreciate everyone's support of the, how do I make it go? Okay, but again, I, each, each of the, my colleagues has endorsed this measure, which I'm appreciative of. And I just want to take a moment to highlight a couple of things for everyone's background, and, and then the, then the action would be to approve it as a board itself. So the Restoration Authority, for those who aren't familiar with it, was formed by legislation in 2008 with the sole mission of raising funds to restore tidal wetlands. So I feel fortunate to serve as the Chair of that commission with six other elected officials. The measure itself, whoops, as you're aware, is a $12 parcel tax across all nine counties for a 20-year term. So historic thing to do something across nine counties, hopefully sets a good precedent for future region-wide efforts. So over the, over the 20 years, would raise 500 million, which would be leveraged with state and federal funds. Now, of course, we do need the two-tier support, which is no small, no small task.
But it's cumulative, right?
It is in the aggregate, right. This is the part I particularly just wanted to bring your attention to. It's also in the board memo, is that, you know, unlike general obligation bonds that you typically do for, or bonds for transportation or schools, you know, the exact projects aren't, you know, isn't, aren't specified in the ballot itself. So there are potential projects all throughout the bay. The areas with the most restorable land, there's a lot in the South Bay where the former Cargill salt ponds are, and there's quite a bit in the North Bay where there's former agricultural lands. But there are projects all around the bay, including in San Mateo County. So the measure does provide that we want some benefit to accrue to each of the counties. So 50% of the revenue is allocated by these four regions, North Bay, South Bay, East Bay, and West Bay. San Mateo is combined with San Francisco as the West Bay. So we would, you know, that region would, we will definitely receive funding, and we can compete for additional funding in the pool. So as pointed out in the memo, the projects that are identified as potential candidates in San Mateo County, the most, most significant ones are the restoration of the, of the Raventwood Pond down in the southern part of the county. And also, the San Fresquito Creek Joint Powers Authority has an ambitious project. It's called the Safer Bay Project, which is nine miles of shoreline protection from Palo Alto up to Redwood City, which would also be a good candidate. Those are two prime ones. Potentially could apply to some of the work we're doing Coyote Point. So there are seven sample projects in your board memo, just, so we, we will, hopefully, we will see some benefits from the passage, if we're so fortunate. So I think I'll leave it at that. I think each, each have a copy of the PowerPoint. But again, I'm grateful for, for your support, and would move that the, the board as a whole endorse the measure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pine. Board, Board Member Reports. No report?
No report.
No report. Supervisor Tissier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one adjourned in memory, and that's from Maureen Murphy. She was a colleague, I shouldn't say colleague, she was in high school with me. She passed away recently. She loved teaching, dancing, golf, bongo, keeping the book at every baseball game she went to, from early game to Little League to the World Series, and hosting the Murphy Family Easter Brunch and Hunt. She will be sorely missed by her families and friends. And I have just a couple of quick announcements. We have come up with a date for this, this year's Seniors on the Move. It's the 29th year, and it will take place on Tuesday, October 25th, at the San Mateo County Event Center. So keep an eye out for those applications. The 12th Annual San Mateo County Disaster Preparedness Day will be on Saturday, June 11th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the San Mateo Event Center once again. And anyone arriving before 11:00 that day will get free parking and free admission to the county fair. And lastly, the upcoming Age Well Drive Smart Seminars, South San Francisco, Thursday, April 28th, at the Magnolia Center in the morning. Belmont, Thursday, May 19th, at Twin Pines Senior Center in the morning. Pacifica, Thursday, June 23rd, at Pacifica Senior Center. And on August 23rd, in San Carlos, at the Adult Community Center, also in the morning. That's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Pine?
No report.
I just wanted to quickly thank John Walton and Julie, who does our tech support here, for these beautiful new monitors. Mine actually works. The screen is clear, and even better, it's brought us into the 21st century, because it's touchscreen, and we can scroll up and down, makes it a lot easier. So thank you to them for thinking of us and doing this project in the board chambers. If there is no other business at the moment, we will adjourn, we will retire to closed session, and then report out at the conclusion. Mr. Byers, would you please report on closed session?
Yes, thank you, President Slocum. The board took action on a unanimous vote to approve the workers' compensation claim of former employee Matthew Powers in the amount of $52,760. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We are adjourned.